West Orange. Today is our third council meeting on Tuesday, January 24, 2023. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 23, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1, 2022. Councilwoman, oh, Councilwoman, oh, sorry. Oh, there you are. Councilwoman Catalina.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford.
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Present.
Council President Williams.
Present.
Mayor McCartney.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We would like to start our conference meeting this evening, acknowledging a milestone that many of us may not have an opportunity to achieve even in our own lifetimes. I am so happy and proud to present our mayor's proclamation to Snyder Hardware, who is celebrating their 100th year in business in the municipality of West Orange. So if I could have members from Snyder Hardware, the Snyder family, come up, please, and Mayor McCartney will present you all with this proclamation.
It's very small font because there's 100 years worth of information on here.
You're quite welcome, quite welcome.
It was a great introduction because I'm honored to be able to present this because as a small business owner too, I thought 25 years was a milestone. And my first phone call was to Roger because as a business owner, I knew I needed to join the chamber. I just knew I needed to do that. So we have been friends and partners for a very long time. So, 100 years. So this says, "Proclamation: Whereas Snyder's Hardware opened their doors on Main Street, Washington, in Washington, in West Orange in 1923, and has been serving this community ever since, today being run by brothers Roger and Gerald, and today are being recognized for their 100 years of service. Isadora Schneider worked at, as, at a knife-sharpening business in Newark before buying the store in 1923. He had a third-grade education and only one eye as a result of an injury. He spoke only Yiddish, and according to his grandson Roger Schneider, there were five other hardware stores in the area that were doing good business. And Lee Schneider, Roger, and Gerald's father, started working at his father's store as a teenager in 1930s, returning, returned after serving in the United States Navy during World War II. He didn't take very many vacations either, but Gerald, Gerald, sorry, I keep saying Gerald. Gerald Schneider said Lee Schneider never pressured his sons to take over the store. Both began their own careers. Gerald as a banker in Connecticut and Roger working for Magnatech, industrial services, selling electrical supplies. "He never pushed it on us, so I tried other things." Gerald Schneider said, "Like I think most people do, you want to get away from where you grew up. I didn't want to be in New Jersey, so I was in New England for a long time. I figured it's better to work for yourself than it is to work for somebody else, and it worked out. But I'm glad I came back." He returned to West Orange in 1983. Roger Schneider went back to the store seven years later in 1990. They worked with their father until he retired in 1997. Lee Schneider died in 2002. The main reason Snyder Hardware has managed to stay open and active for 100 continuous years, according to Roger, is the number of unique items it carries, including plumbing and lockware for older homes, of which there are many in our area. And they've, and this is a quote, "They've been so active in our community, it sets an example." Mayor McCartney said in an interview, "They've established themselves as a reliable place to go. There's always a steady stream of foot traffic there, that's what we strive for in our Main Street corridor, and they've built that up, their base." Roger and Gerald Schneider have been both active volunteers with the West Orange Chamber of Commerce, the Lions Club, the Rotary Club, and other organizations in town, which have been important to both of them personally into the business. "West Orange is as important to them as they are to West Orange. We're so glad to have served the West Orange community," Roger said, "it's a town like no other. Very few towns here have what we have here. We caught the volunteer bug, but it's what you can give back that gives the greatest satisfaction." So now, therefore, as newly-elected mayor of the Township of West Orange, on behalf of the Town Council and community, do hereby congratulate Snyder's Hardware Store on their 100th anniversary year of service to our community and for their community service, and extend our warm best wishes for a long and continued success. Congrats.
I'll take a photo?
Yeah, we're gonna all take a photo with them because this is 100 years. This is something worth celebrating. So we want a photo with the mayor, but we want a photo with the entire council.
And we have representation from Congressman Payne's office as well. Oh, okay. Well, do you want to just let, get all your awards first? Don't go anywhere, don't go anywhere.
So forgive me, I forgot my glasses, so.
Do you need readers or?
No, 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 I'm fine. I should be good. I should be good. Good evening. My name is Shane Amelius. I'm here on behalf of Congressman Donald Payne Jr. So, whereas Congressman Donald Payne Jr. designates Snyder Hardware to be the recipient of the Congressman Donald M. Payne Jr. Business Recognition Award. Whereas they are celebrating their 100th anniversary, this award commemorates the founding of the outstanding establishments. And whereas there has been three generations of Snyder's, now Robert, is Robert? Oh, Roger. Oh, my God, I'm sorry. Roger and Gerald, who are continuing the legacy of their grandfather, Isador, that's right, right? Okay, Snyder. He planted this seed, and all of this hard work has been brought to them through their 100th year of service and serving the residents of West Orange and the surrounding communities. And whereas we are all proud to have such an extraordinary business like the Snyder Hardware in my district or in his district, okay? And we wish them continued success in the future. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the residents of the 10th Congressional District of New Jersey, the undersigned member of the U.S. Congress, U.S., I'm sorry, United States Congress, the Honorable Donald M. Payne Jr. hereby commemorates Snyder Hardware for being an integral part of West Orange community.
All right. Yes, yes. Yes, yes, one more time. Ready? One, two. We have one more, one more guy. You'll get the mic.
Hi, guys. So I'm Megan Bro with the Downtown Alliance, and we have a copy of the Township Mayor McCartney's proclamation. I always think it's important that you're going to want to keep one in your store, but then you want to keep one at home in the dining room, I'm sure. So we made extra copies of the proclamation. Now, quite as nice as Mayor McCartney's, but it serves a purpose. I just want to say thank you on behalf of everybody downtown. You guys are always the first ones to lend out your parking lot for Downtown Thursday event or a trolley marker about, you know, the downtown trolley. We also, whenever you guys have a concern or question, you're always so nice when you're trying to say, "Meg, I need your help." So we really appreciate you being downtown, and it's a super heavy accomplishment to be here for 100 years. So thank you all for being here.
Who's the oldest?
Right. Roger.
Say something quick.
Yes, please do, please do.
I just want to make a comment first. Roger and I know each other pretty well. I've gone to his store many times. And in fact, we, my wife and I and my child moved here on July 1, 1976, which is getting pretty close to 50 years ago. And your store was the first store I went to. So.
Nice to hear.
Been a great relationship.
I'm sure there's lots of business to happen tonight, so I'll make it very brief, but I didn't want to not miss the chance to at least just say a couple of things that some of you might find interesting. The mayor actually covered a couple of things that I would have normally said, but just to, not repeat, but just to mention a few things about my grandfather and father, who wouldn't be here today if it weren't for them. He started in 1923 when he came to Newark, I'm sorry, from Newark, to West Orange where he bought a hardware store. There were many obstacles, his language barrier, his, in fact, five other hardware stores doing just fine. But over a number of years, he created a following. And it was interesting, my father told me that he was a rotarian for a short time, but for, he was a rotarian, so he set that volunteerism bug in the family from the beginning. The our dad, who's, was very well-known as, his name was Leon, but also many people called him Sonny. Sonny Schneider began working there in high school in the '30s. He he graduated in 1939, which was actually the same year as our public information officer's dad. And three years before his next-door neighbor Brendan Byrne graduated. He served in the Navy, as you heard before, and he worked there for 66 hours a week for 60 years, until he retired in 1999. He, I would say, is pretty quite well-known throughout the community as a very positive, hard-working, dedicated, resourceful businessman who had a lust for life. He would regularly impart either some jokes, anecdotes, or share things about West Orange history through his extensive display of postcards and photographs of old-time West Orange. You need to visualize, he had a big display of these postcards and photographs long before we had the benefit of our town historian. So people actually enjoy, not everyone, but a lot of people actually enjoyed seeing and hearing about a lot of old-time West Orange. Specifically, what he might talk about or show pictures of would be things about the first gated community of the United States, the Welland Park, might talk about Edison or his factory. He might have talked about the trolley cars running down Main Street, or maybe even Crystal Lake. We still display some of these pictures today. He was also instrumental in organizing two West Orange High School reunions. He was an engaging personality. He often even made deliveries to Edison's home when he was young. My brother Gerald, he's there 40 years this year. And he very quickly took his previous experience in banking. He combined it with his accounting degree, and he became, pretty quickly, treasurer of what was then called the Main Street Development Corporation. That's the, today, the Downtown West Orange Alliance. He was on one of the original boards where he served for a number of years. Then I became treasurer for nine years, and then four, it was eight years after that when it became the Downtown West Orange Alliance. But Gerald is carrying on, he was carrying on the tradition after my dad, volunteerism and community involvement. And he even helped, we had a lot of notable people over the years, I won't mention any of them, but people from every walk of life. But to have Thomas Edison's son Theodore be a customer, a regular customer, and to buy bulbs, which to me, it was the greatest irony. My dad could never get over it. Of all the things he could have got from us, they were not regular bulbs, they were specialty bulbs that would promote plant life. And he was, I think he was, might have been known as a nationally, Mr. Fagan could verify this better than I can, but I think he was known as an arborist conservationist and friends with John Muir, and he was, I don't know, he was into plants and trees and flowers, and that bulb would help him. The, excuse me. The, I started 33 years ago. I was quickly involved with not just the Downtown West Orange Alliance, but Lions Club and Chamber of Commerce. And I want to do something that I've never done before, literally, and to thank my brother because it was, it's Gerald over all these years allowing me to time away from the business, which made it possible for me to be as active and involved as I have been. As a result of, as, as a result of all of this, Schneider Hardware is now the oldest continuously operated family business in West Orange, but it's the oldest hardware store and largest county in New Jersey, including Newark, where a third generation continue the tradition of old-world values, such as personalized service, uncommon inventory for older homes, uncommon service combined with uncommon problem-solving and solutions. That's the key to our success. That's why we're here so many years, because of those problem-solving and solutions. The one other point that, you know, it took me many years of meeting lots of people around town at different civic groups to actually, I heard about this, but I wasn't able to confirm it until many decades went by. But it's just one of the many benefits of a non-chain, non-big-box business. I don't mean ours, but any non-chain, non-big-box business. No insult to them, they're all, you know, good, successful, good businesses, but most, the majority of the members of all the local service clubs that I've met over the last 35 years in West Orange, they're not big-box or chain or franchise places. Finally, we are so grateful to have served the West Orange community all these years, which allowed us the opportunity to experience and come into contact with people of every background in a diverse multicultural town that has so much to offer, and I really mean this, like no other town in New Jersey, all the things we have around town. We got hooked a very long time ago on volunteerism and community involvement because we learned, as Mayor just mentioned before about us, that it's, it's really not about what you can get back, but rather what you can give back that truly gives the greatest satisfaction. On behalf of the Schneider family, I want to thank the mayor, Mayor McCartney, Council President Williams, and all the council members for recognizing us in this way. We are honored, we're grateful, and very happy to receive this.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. And to keep the session going, we would also like to acknowledge our award recipients for the Community Development Block Grant. On last week, we attended the award ceremony in Cedar Grove, and we would like to let our residents and our West Orange family know how fortunate and blessed these organizations are to receive the financial support from the county. So without any further ado, I would ask Main Street Counseling, Joy Church of God, and Bethany Church of, Bethany Church, to please all come forward. Did you text it to me or did you email it to me? It was an email? All right. Thank you so very much. We have just a few moments left for council liaison announcements. We are in our third week of January, so some of our boards and commissions have still yet to meet. However, I represent as a liaison the Municipal Alliance Committee. They had their quarterly meeting today. They talked mostly about the need to reallocate about $8,000 in grant funding that they have been awarded and that needs to be reallocated so that they don't lose it and will have to be spent before June. So those are some of the programming concerns, issues, opportunities that they have, and they will redirect those funds so that we can do some additional community programming to support alcohol and drug abuse and awareness. That might be it for my liaison appointment since the last meeting. So, Councilwoman Catalina.
Sure. Thank you, Council President. So I am the liaison to the Downtown Alliance, so I once again want to congratulate Schneider's Hardware on 100 years. I know when we do our holiday trolley tour and we pass by the store, I've always, you know, always say, you know, it was 90 years, almost 100 years, and here you are already 100 years in the making. So God bless you all. We look for many more years to come, and just thank you for being such a great partner to the downtown. And Restaurant Week is back, so the board has been busy. Downtown Alliance are working with the Public Relations Commission. And from March 19th to 25th, there will be a town-wide Restaurant Week. We're excited about this. There's a website this time that will be launched that will show all the participants. So right now, the emails just went out to the restaurants. We have many of them signing up to participate, and within a couple of weeks, all the restaurants will be on the website that will, that will get dispersed through the township and advertised, so you know where to sign up to go to Restaurant Week at the end of March. So we'll keep making those announcements. And also, the Public Relations Commission, which are also the liaison for, is hosting a residential realtor open house on March 7. All residential realtors will be invited to that, something we're working on right now. The committees are working on all the literatures, updating welcome videos for the township. So a lot of excitement. We have a new mayor, so a lot of new, there's a lot of updates that we need to do, and we're excited about that. So a lot of great things. We've been busy and we'll keep it going. So we look forward and keep you in touch. And if you haven't already done so, please, a reminder to download the Township app where you can find all goings-on in the township. It's downtown mobile app sponsored by Downtown Alliance. It's townwide app that gives you all information about our township. And you can find that on your App Store on any one of your phone, whether Android or iPhone. Thank you, Council President.
Quite welcome. Thank you for that wealth of information. Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, Council President. Just a couple of updates for me. We do have an item on our agenda tonight from the joint meeting. And where I serve as the liaison, I was elected again to be the treasurer for the second year. So excited to serve in that capacity again. And I'll speak more about the flood mitigation project when we get to that point in the agenda. Also wanted to make an announcement regarding the Thomas Holcomb Scholarship Fundraiser, which is going to be held on February 11 from 7:00 p.m. till midnight at the VFW on Eisenhower Parkway in Roslyn. This is sponsored by the West Orange African Heritage Organization, some members are sitting here tonight. And so for those that are interested, please check them out on social media or on their website, waahoh.org, for additional information. And then I've got to say something about Schneider Hardware. So, you know, 100 years is nothing to sneeze at. Any entrepreneur knows that it is difficult even to make the first few years. But I found a couple of things interesting in the commentary tonight first. Faith knows through their faith, believing people of science believe, as Einstein said, that energy does not die, it just transforms. So while we have three generations that are represented in running that business, one generation was here, I am certain both your father and your grandfather are present as well. And this is how we keep them alive. This is how we honor their presence and their spirit. So I was, when you made your comments, and I just wanted to highlight that today. And the second thing I found interesting is that after all of these years, Roger, this is the first time you thanked Gerald. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman Scarpa.
Thank you. I also am a customer of the hardware store. And I think it's wonderful to have a small store like that where you go in and you really get that personal service. You feel like you're talking to a brother or a family member, and I so appreciate that. Also, I'm liaison to Ospac, and I did meet with Camille and Bill Keough, and we have a lot of interesting, really fun projects coming up. And this spring, we'll have a number of announcements of things that we're going to do. One of the things we want to do is try to get our students involved, maybe our mountaineer mentors or the kids to get much more involved in our community and helping, because you wouldn't believe there's a lot of work that goes into putting those productions on. And we always need help and always need volunteers. So if you know anyone or if you're interested, please contact us. I'm also the liaison to the Environmental Committee, which meets tomorrow. But in the meantime, I've been going to just about each and every committee to learn what they do, what I can contribute. And I've been really touched with the quality and the commitment of all of the volunteers that I've met. They really are so excited about what we're doing. We have so many wonderful, wonderful volunteers that I think it's going to be a really wonderful year, and we'll keep you posted as more things happen.
Thank you. It is 7:01. I think our clock is adjusted properly. So we will close our conference meeting agenda, and I will call to order our public meeting. Thank you, mayor, for gracing us with your presence. Bye. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Picture is gorgeous. Yeah, absolutely gorgeous, clear, crystal clear. And it zooms in, and Joe Fagan's got the control.
Madam Clerk, this is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 23, 2022, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 1, 2022. Councilwoman Catalina.
Present.
Councilman Rutherford.
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpa.
Present.
Council President Williams.
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? The council is now in their public meeting.
Good evening. Typically, we start our council meetings with public comment. This evening, we will continue to do so. This evening, we will continue to do so. However, before we introduce and invite you up to public comment, and we would just like to make a note of one of the resolutions that was on the agenda this evening has been pulled by the administration, and I will give the administration a moment to just make any comments if they so choose.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, there was a, actually, there's an ordinance that was on for this evening, which, which had to do with the zoning board of adjustment. We've pulled that. After doing some investigation, we realized that the ordinance itself probably is not necessary. It will probably return in a different form because there were a couple of items in the ordinance that are necessary for the future. But for now, that ordinance will not be required. We, the, there was an issue of interest that we're aware of that the mayor has addressed by making an appointment. There was a issue with appointments for the two new members of the council. The mayor has moved one of the appointments that was in the way. And perhaps we're doing some research as to how that actually happened in the past. It was we've gone back at least 10 years, and we haven't found it. And I think we may have found it about 15 years ago. But nonetheless, that the mayor has resolved it by removing or moving the person who was in that appointment to one of the mayor's appointments, leaving that open so that both the new council people now have the ability to make their appointments to the zoning board. So that issue, and if I can, just one other item. You're used to seeing us having a videographer to take care of video. As of this meeting, we're testing, we have a camera installed that will be able to provide all of the lookups and close-ups and, and being done. And we're going to be transmitting that all through Zoom and recording it through Zoom and then uploading it to the website as once we're done. So we're trying tonight. We hope that it works out well. We have a pretty good idea what the picture quality is, and which we're, we so far in practice sessions, we've been pretty impressed with it. And we hope that this ends up being a staple for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Council President. So with the new camera, that's great. But we have the ability to upload this and get this over to TV 36, and is TV 36 fixed yet?
As, as far as we, the answer to that, TV 36 is not fixed. And our understanding is that they hope to be ready by sometime mid-month, next month. We're looking forward to that, to being able to do that. We haven't tested it yet because they're not operating. So that, that, that will remain to be seen. But we feel that at the very least, we're going to be able to operate within the Zoom world. And then we'll figure that out from there. But we really can't, gonna have a difficult time testing it until they actually go live.
Yeah, because it's important because obviously the people that watch TV 36 don't operate in the Zoom world.
Sure.
And, and it's important that they see the meetings too.
We agree.
Great. Thank you.
And so before we, I do want to just make everyone aware. If you happen to be looking for the video from the first meeting on, on the 10th or the second actual council meeting, but meeting number two, we were unable to upload what was done on a personal cell phone. The footage was just too long and would not allow us to transfer it to some type of medium where it could be uploaded. So we do apologize that we were not able. I certainly was a little disappointed because it was my first meeting. But, you know, to know though, we did not have the capacity to put the video up, but we did have the audio, and the audio is available for anyone who wants to know what happened on that January 10th meeting. So again, thank you for your patience and your indulgence. If I do have anyone who would like to have an agenda, they are up here on the front desk. And if there's anyone who would like to approach the podium for public comment, please welcome and come and do so. As you approach, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Council President, members of the public. I'm Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. I have a brief report to make. The West Orange Police Department is seeking volunteer auxiliary police officers. There's contact information on the website. If you recall at the last council meeting, they're also seeking crossing guards. That is a paid position. The auxiliary police department is a volunteer position. So the numbers are up here on the screen, and you can also view them on our, our website. Also, Christmas tree pickup, Christmas seems like a month ago. But your Christmas tree pickup in West Orange, it continues through the 27th. You can put it out at the curb. And as I said, this information is up on our website. On January 15th, we had the Anna Easter Brown Marker rededication at the West Orange Public Library. It was attended by Mayor McCartney, Council President Williams, and of course, that's our own zoning officer, Janice Carrie Adams, who was also there. And it was, it's always a great turnout for that. I myself was there, and I had the honor of saying a few words before the crowd, before the rededication. In light of the Mar Hamlin situation with the Buffalo Bills, where the AED was proved to be the difference in saving the young man's life, Mayor McCartney has instructed Fire Chief Vecchio to reexamine and reevaluate all the AEDs throughout the township so that they're all up to date. On January 16th was Martin Luther King Day. I have pictured here the Grassroots Foundation, Mayor McCartney, Councilwoman Williams. If you recall, I believe it was last fall, Olivia Raymond gave a presentation about grassroots before the town council. They were one of three recipients. Also, the four students at West Orange High School also gave, first, they're actually seniors. They all gave an inspiring perspective on what Martin Luther King Day means to them, and they are pictured here with, with Mayor McCartney. This past Saturday, we also had a ribbon cutting for Wing It On, just in time for the football games opened at 161 Main Street. And the Edison Lost, be sure, be sure to check it out. Finally, it's worth mentioning, and perhaps Mr. Pagliisi will talk about this. I don't want to steal his thunder, but the deer management in South Mountain Reservation is still going on through January and into February. That concludes my report, Council President. And if anybody, oh, it does not conclude my report. I'm sorry. I have one other item to add. If anyone wants to contact me, this is my contact information. All the information mentioned tonight is available on westorange.org. I would be remiss in my duties if I did not mention that we have a birthday to celebrate today, 72 years old. Now, who could that be? More appropriate would be, what would that be? And that is the West Orange Library. In 1951, this building here was on the corner of Gaston Street, Mount Pleasant Avenue. It was the first building for the West Orange Public Library. And then in 1959, it moved into the current building. And of course, in 1979, the addition was added. And by this spring, it will be moving for the third time in its, in its history. So today, the West Orange Public Library is 72 years old. It doesn't look a day over one year. Well, excuse me. That concludes my report, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman. Mr. Fagan, when did the Gaston Street School get taken down? What year was that?
Back to that picture there, and you're referring to the, okay. Directly behind the library there is the, the building to the right is the Gaston Street School. That was the first high school in West Orange. It was constructed in 1898. Unfortunately, it burnt down in 1917 and was rebuilt. The building behind that to the left is the Fairmount School. And while the building was, while the high school was being rebuilt, high school students went to the Fairmount School, and of course, 1922, it opened on Gaston, on Northfield Avenue until it was sold for Seton Hall. And thank you so much, Councilwoman Castellino, for putting me on the spot. I'm glad I knew the answer.
I knew you would.
And the other thing, the other thing, Council President, I just want to point out real quickly, and it's not like me to talk at a school, but at the ribbon cutting on Saturday, Councilwoman Scarpa was an excellent parallel parker. I had her eye on, I had my eye on her because it was my car that she was gonna hit. But she did an excellent job.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Now, if you'll please make your way to the podium. Thank you. And your name and address for the record.
My name is Doris Moses. I live at 7 Brook Drive in West Orange. And my family and I, we are real recyclers. Last week, I think because of the holiday, the garbage men or the garbage people came late, and I just happened to be looking out the window. We had our paper, we had our glass, we had our plastic. And they picked up all of the garbage and threw it in one truck. I was shocked. I put on my coat to run out, but they were gone to let them know that they didn't recycle. My question is, is West Orange still in the business of recycling? I did call the Public Works, and the woman told me yes, and that I'm not the only person that has been calling. And I would like to know, is there something we can do about recycling? Because I'm real serious about it. If you come to my house in the kitchen, I have a bag for paper, I have a bag for plastic. What's the other one? Bottles? And I would like to know, what can we do about that situation to encourage, not encourage, to tell them that they must recycle and not put everything in the same truck?
Thank you, Ms. Moses. We appreciate your comments. And we'll address all comments at the end of public comment. Okay. Yes, come on. Thank you.
And welcome, new members. My name is Althea Tweaton. I live at 15 Edgar Road. I'm here today because Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, in which Tammy's a member, my chapters, Omicron, Chi Omega, and Montclair, we're presenting a human trafficking event, a Zoom program. Because so many young people are being snatched, they go at their, they sometimes they're coerced into joining this, I guess, organization or whatever it is. But a lot of our young people are being taken advantage of. And some we don't see anymore. They disappear. They're either killed or when they come back, they're just different. My chapter is, we're having, like I said, a Zoom program. And we're fortunate to have one of our own Chief Abbott is one of the presenters. He's one of our Zoom presenters for the program. It's on January 30th. It's on Zoom through Omicron, Chi Omega, and on Facebook, if you want to go and register. We have people from Ted Stevens' office as well, who are going to be presenters. It's going to be an interesting program. It will tell you what role we can play to help our young. It will tell us what to tell our young people so that they don't become involved. It will also let them know, from what I understand, that these people put something on your door or on your window, and when you get out the car to get it, they inject you with something that paralyzed you, and they take you, black, white, they don't care what color you are. I don't know what they, and they also send a lot of these young people to other countries. And it's all, it's sex and human trafficking. It's for boys and girls or young people both male and female, not just female. So I want you to be aware of it. I want you to listen to the program. And like I said, I'm so happy to have Chief Abbott as one of our presenters. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Tweaton. Yes, please come forward. And please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Philip Litwinoff. I live at 11 Linden Avenue here in town since 1977. And I think my comment right now pales in relation to the previous issue that was just raised. However, Mr. Gross, I appreciate the comments that you made. You handled it very delicately as to what you were trying to say, but I'm kind of still in a quandary. I've been watching the town zoning board meetings for the past several weeks on the applications before them. And I'm very concerned as to what's been happening as far as a reluctance of the chairman to permit the proper delegates to be on the board. I would just like to clarify. I know the Councilwoman, Councilwoman Scarpa has put her candidate forth to be on the zoning board. Is that candidate now going to be permitted to be seated on the zoning board?
So we will respond to your questions at the end of public comment. So he will do the same. So if that is your question, we will respond, certainly.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Brent Draper Scott, 75 Nestro Road. First, I want to speak on behalf of the Western African Heritage Organization. I'm Vice President of the organization, and on Sunday, February the 19th, at 1:00 PM at the Edison School, Edison Central Six, we're going to have our Black History Month program. And I'm very, very excited to let you know that we're going to be honoring modern American heroes, including the heroes right here in West Orange. And in a documentary film that I have directed, along with the help of film students from Hunter College and the School of Broadcasting at Mercy College, where I'm an instructor. We spoke to, I interviewed many, many people who 30 years ago helped get this organization started, including one of our speakers, two of our speakers. They're both Doris Moses and Althea Tweaton, who were not founding members, but they've been in town for 40 years. And they talked about in specifically why the organization was founded. And I think a lot of people are going to be surprised about that. So that's going to be again at 1:00 PM on February 19th at the Edison School. Now, I want to address the zoning issue that has been pulled, and I want to address that. And I'll address it as if I hadn't heard that it's been pulled because I prepared for it. So we have a quandary here. The ordinance established the terms of the zoning board members are, and I'm paraphrasing, the mayor shall make two appointments. Each member of the town council shall make one appointment. Yet by seemingly untoward measures, Councilwoman Susan Scarpa has been denied her right to make an appointment to the zoning board. I have asked the town clerk, Karen Carnavale, to provide appointment dates, appointed them, and when their terms expire. In return, I received a response suggesting that Councilwoman Castellino made two appointments, that there are perhaps holdover appointees from Mayor Parisi, and that then Councilwoman McCartney made a late-term appointment and so forth. One would think that who was appointed, by whom, and when their term ends would be an easy thing to answer. So I filed an Oprah, an Open Public Records request, and I look forward to learning the facts and to sharing those facts. What we do know is that two appointments to the zoning board were made in January 2023, but that neither of those appointments was made by Councilwoman Susan Scarpa. I teach, and I'm teaching right now, practical, ethical leadership to graduate students at Mercy College in the MBA program. Denying Councilwoman Scarpa her right to make an appointment to the zoning board is unethical. Perhaps you've heard the phrase engineered resignation, midnight appointment, or planned early departure. This speaks to underhanded, to an underhanded way for dishonest people, perhaps insecure leaders, to place their hands on the for dishonest people, perhaps insecure leaders, to place their hands on the scale. It is unethical. In this instance, specifically, it deprives Councilwoman Susan Scarper of her right as a member of this council to make an appointment to the zoning board. The current ordinance also states, and again, I am paraphrasing, that no person shall serve consecutive terms in the role of chair or vice chair of zoning board. Yet in January twenty twenty-three, two weeks ago, in clear violation, both the chair and the vice, and the vice chair were sworn into just that, consecutive terms. The town is begging for a lawsuit. Before you, and I'm glad it was pulled, was a proposal to fix these shenanigans after the fact. In twenty fourteen, a billionaire by the name of Tom Perkins floated his great idea for voting rights in America. And it went like this. If you have more money, you get more votes. At the time, this reminded me of the fictional character J R Ewing, who stated, once you lose integrity, the rest is easy. The dictionary defines integrity as the quality of being honest and conducting oneself in accordance with strong moral principles. So I ask each of you, do you have strong moral principles that guide your actions? The proposal that was pulled tonight would change the appointment process of the zoning board members is similar to the proposal by the billionaire Tom Perkins, who thought and probably still thinks that he should be entitled to more votes, as many votes as he has dollars. So in an election.
Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Scott. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else? Yes, please come forward.
I thought you were going to move to the front. Well, would you please, we have given you honorary seating. Because of you. Absolutely. You have honorary designated seating.
At the risk of sounding redundant, which I probably am, I came here tonight not planning to speak.
And your name and address for the record.
When the brothers, the Schneider brothers were here talking about small business, a light went on in my head.
And your name and address.
One of my volunteer projects was counseling to the S B A. Went through training, got certified. It was one of the most interesting things I did. And having been born during the depression, the Great Depression in the urban area and watching things grow that I didn't understand about and mom and pop stores and all of that stuff. I'm looking at, my comparison now is, a point I want to make is, here is a family that started business in this town. And they're still here in business. They're part of the whole township, the history and whatever. Selling marijuana is not going to be something we should be talking about and being proud of. I'm sorry. A lot of people don't agree with me. I just can't wrap my head around it. I can't see this town turning in that direction. And tonight, it was like, it was melancholy for me to hear them talk. Family businesses, the immigrants came, they lived in back of the store, over the store. I had a friend whose family had a bakery, Italian bakery. I ate more Italian bread after school with her because we'd go into the store and work and help them. I just can't, I cannot, as I said, wrap my head around the fact that there are people who are getting offended over those of us who don't want to see a small business like selling marijuana. I don't think that's the way it should go. And I think the Schneiders were a perfect example of the American dream and what it's all about. Thank you.
And one more time, before you leave, your name and address for the record.
I don't know what it is. Let me spell it. It's Rosary Morelli.
Thank you.
And I live in Ralph.
Thank you. And as always, we appreciate, we appreciate your comments. Thank you. We do, we do. Is there anyone else in the, yes, please come forward?
Hi, my name is Sheila Lofkowitz, Pleasant Valley Way.
Thank you.
What do you call the medical student who graduates the last in his class? The answer, doctor. Two wonderful qualified councilpersons were elected to serve on the West Orange Town Council. Both represent the voters who put them in office. It does not matter how many votes that each person got. Both are called councilpersons. And as these councilpersons begin their terms, shouldn't they have the right to make their own appointments? Appointees as the councilpersons before them did? In early January, when councilman, when councilperson Scarpa exercised her right to make an appointment to the zoning board, she was denied while council, while other councilpeople were able to make their appointments. Councilperson Scarpa was told there was only one appointment. Strangely, two people were sworn in who made the second appointment. Was the councilperson who made that appointment no longer in office? Shouldn't elected officials and their appointees serve co-terminously and then vacate when new officials are elected into office? This would permit the appointment power that is due to a newly elected official to represent her constituency in the same manner as was afforded to her predecessor. It is a new day. Today, tonight, the council is being asked to amend an ordinance giving the councilperson with the most votes in the previous election preference to make an appointment over the councilperson with the lesser number of votes. Now, is there any precedent to diminish the power of one elected official over another because of the number of votes in an election? Would it be ethical to favor one winner over another winner? Is it ethical to allow someone no longer in a previous position the right to continue to have an appointee? Tonight, there will be an attempt to justify denying councilperson Scarpa her right to make an appointment to the zoning board by adding words that never existed in any ordinance to grant preference to councilperson with the most votes in the previous election to make an appointment. That is not fair. Furthermore, the zoning board appointees should serve co-terminously with the official who appoints them, as is in the case with other boards and committees in our town. In this matter, councilperson Scarpa and other, the other councilpersons can all make their rightful appointments to the zoning board. It's bad business to make retroactive laws to justify diminishing the power of a councilperson elected to represent her constituency. As a constituent who voted for councilperson Scarpa, my representation is being diminished as well. Please don't make my light go out. I am very much alive. And I have the right to be represented by the person I elected just as much as the good people who voted for the other councilpeople. I'm positive that the zoning board will be served well by the representatives appointed by all of you. The second matter is the distance of a house of worship, park, daycare center, or school from the cannabis dispensary. I live on Pleasant Valley Way, and that's within a one mile radius of nursery schools, public schools, parks, and houses of worship. Children and their parents are walking to schools and daycare centers. parishioners are walking to houses of worship. People are walking to parks. I see people walk up to a mile away from the schools and houses of worship and parks to their homes. That one mile radius needs to be protected. Every family has to decide for itself what they want their children to be exposed to on their unavoidable path to their most local and essential houses of worship, parks, daycare centers, and schools. While some citizens are okay with the new cannabis legislations, others are not prepared or do not desire to have this discussion with their children for religious, moral, or developmental reasons. Let's make sure that all families who must traverse a one mile radius to their local house of worship, park, daycare center, or school have the opportunity to do so while allowing the voters of New Jersey their legal right to move forward, allowing cannabis businesses to operate.
Your time is up. Thank you, Ms. Lefkowitz. If you'll please, now, Ms. Lefkowitz.
Yes.
If I give you additional time, I have to do that to everyone.
Twenty seconds.
If, if you'll please, just some eyes and wrap up. Not twenty seconds, just the last sentence.
Cannabis, cannabis businesses can flourish outside this impact zone. Therefore, I'm asking each councilperson to amend our ordinance to read, to read that no cannabis businesses should be located within one mile radius of a house of worship, park, daycare center, or school. So that we can all live harmoniously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, please come forward. And if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Rachel Hershey. Like the chocolate without the second H.
Oh, yes. How's that? And your address, please.
And my address is Eighth Mellon Avenue, West Orange.
Thank you.
So I support many of the statements that Ms. Lefkowitz mentioned. And I'm also going to talk about the cannabis ordinance. I've gone back and I think I got all of the versions. I understand there's really only one adopted version, which was on two fifteen, which is the one that we're under right now, two fifteen twenty-two. And then there's been a number of changes to that version. I would like to say first of all, that it's very difficult to follow the versions and compare them when we don't have a red line. So I would beseech the council members to be sure that red lines are available for everything that's posted and everything we're going to talk about at a meeting. I would commend the council for giving a red line on the term limits legislation because that was very helpful. So I'm, I have like five different points about cannabis that I'd like to talk about. One is that I strongly support Ms. Lefkowitz's recommendation that it be a mile from all schools, all synagogues, et cetera. I do, and that two hundred yards would, no feet, two hundred feet would just not, is it feet? I think it's feet, wouldn't be enough at all. Another thing that's concerning for the layperson, I actually am an attorney, which you'll know because everything I'm saying is going to be pretty technical. It was very hard to figure this out unless I read everything, which I had to. I had to read everything in each version. The original version that was adopted on two twenty-two was very clear. First of all, it was, all the rules were in terms of licensed cannabis establishments, establishments. This version that we're now looking at is not about establishments, it's about entities. And the entity, cannabis entity, is now defined only as a retailer. So the current version is suggesting or saying, we want to be able to license seven. And I understand that seven licenses have already been granted. And so that's one of the things you're going to be voting on today. I would just like to remind everyone that on two fifteen, there was only four. The ordinance as it stands now, there was only allowed four licenses. Those licenses were to establish, which included four different categories of cannabis enterprises. Manufacturer, cultivation, retailing, and wholesaling. So the first version was saying, we'll have one of each, which I think would be great to go slow. You see exactly what happens. To all of a sudden, open up seven pot stores. And I understand one of them is going to be across the street from ShopRite, where I happen to go all the time. That's like everyone in West Orange goes to ShopRite, and it's going to be in our face. Now, I am one of those persons who actually voted for the constitutional, state constitutional amendment to what has brought us today. I voted yes on the marijuana resolution. However, like many other persons, I thought I was just going to stop cops arresting people when they come there for traffic acts, you know, they stop the car more often than not minorities. And then the minority driver, for no, is just arrested and his whole night is ruined or whatever. So that's what I thought it was for, certainly not to all of a sudden have pot being sold like cigarettes anywhere all over West Orange. So I would suggest and ask, and Princeton and other, New York has also gone slowly. And people are seeing the problems when you do have this. Like, I'd like to know how it's going to be enforced, that there should be no smoking on the streets. I don't know how they're going to do that. Smoking of cannabis, which.
Your time is up.
Okay.
Thank you so very much. No problem. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. And I think I saw one other hand. If there's anyone else. Thank you.
Hello, Paula Weinberg, five forty-five Mount Pleasant Ave. First of all, I just want to say congratulations to everybody new on the members and probably not a good idea to wear a jumpsuit when you're going to come up and talk because you get nervous. You guys, I wasn't going to get up and say anything, but I am actually trying to be in the cannabis business in wholesale. And I really wasn't coming here to talk, but after all the comments, I would just like to say my opinion on it. It's interesting that you would say you don't want cannabis sold where cigarettes are sold. But cigarettes are good, alcohol is good. And unfortunately, you guys, cannabis is already being sold in West Orange, all over West Orange, the illicit market. So it's, it's being sold here for years and it's not going away. Just like alcohol isn't going away, either is cannabis. Would you not rather have an establishment that has to go through unbelievable security and licensing and testing and making sure that it is medically, it's medical marijuana that's being sold? Instead of something on the street where I know my kids and their friends in West Orange High School used to buy their stuff that we don't even know what's in it. So why would you not want a regulated way so that we could actually have a safe place where people could buy it? And if you think it's going to be in your face, I don't notice when I go to ShopRite. I don't notice people drinking liquor all in my face or drinking cigarettes. You're, it's not going to be in your face. It's going to be in a store. I'm, I'm originally from Canada, where it is legal across the whole country, where I just came back visiting my family. And believe me, I didn't see a bunch of people hanging around on the streets, smoking joints and hanging out and smoking blunts everywhere. You're not going to see that. They're, they're, they're not going to be doing that. It's going to be very regulated. It's very, it's, it's a very, very hard industry to get into, very expensive, very difficult. So I, I understand that you don't have to use it, just like I don't choose to use pharmaceutical drugs. You don't have to use it. You don't have to be a lover of it, but it is going to be here. It's coming. We might as well accept it and make it be regulated and safe. And I believe it's about education. See, that's one of the things that we think is that the kids and the people need to be more educated about this plant and about when it is good and when it's not good. Because I do agree, it is not good for young people to be abusing any kind of drug and alcohol and cigarettes and vaping. So I'm, I just didn't really again want necessarily get up here and speak and introduce myself, but I have to, I have to say that I, I believe the prohibition of cannabis has put a lot of people in prison, broken up a lot of families. As you were saying, arrested a lot of people for something that. that uh, it's time to end this prohibition of this plant. And it is going to end and it is everywhere. And so it's time for us to just kind of accept it and move on. And thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Weinberg. Is there anyone else? All right. So if, I'm sorry, it it's going, it was counting up instead of down, but the five minute timeframe was still um, in order. And if we'll have our last final comments in the room from Mr. Puglisi from the county.
Very short remarks tonight.
All right, no problem.
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. Uh, looking ahead on some upcoming events on March fourth at ten AM and March eighth at six PM in these council chambers, we are partnering with the township to prevent a home improvement program information session. Uh, this will help homeowners uh, who need to bring their houses up to code. Uh, it is an income eligible program and all that information will be provided that evening. So excuse me, if there are residents that are interested, once again, it's March fourth at ten and March eighth at six. Um, on Saturday, March eleventh, from ten until two, we do have a job fair at Turtle Bag Zoo uh, for summer jobs at the South Mountain Recreation Complex. And finally, a little closer on the calendar, uh, Thursday, February second, we have Groundhog Day at Turtle Bag Zoo. Um, different this year is the starting time, we're starting at eight AM instead of eleven. Uh, so we look forward to a early spring because it's, you know, I don't like the cold weather as I get older. Uh, all this information uh, is or will be on the county website, uh, which is Essex County NJ dot O R G.
Thank you so very much. All right, Mr. Fagan, if we could, yes.
Council President, I, there was somebody in the back who raised their hand and you, I don't think noticed them and I may be mistaken, that I think they wanted to speak, so.
Okay, is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Fagan.
Council President, we have thirty-four attendees uh, on Zoom and so far three have their hands raised. If anyone in the Zoom audience would like to address uh, the Township Council, please raise your hand at this time. Uh, first up, we have Norah Gibbs. Uh, Norah, please state your name and address for the record. Welcome to the meeting.
Good evening, everyone. Um, my name is Nordia Gibbs. I resided two zero six Tremont Avenue in Orange. Um, I too had a quick comment on the cannabis ordinance. Um, I am also an applicant alongside my husband of Pure Natural Vibes LLC. Um, it it, I mean, I'm I'm excited to hear actual uh, residents of the township hear their concerns about the cannabis businesses. Um, I I welcome those, you know, that oppose because our goal is to address any and all concerns. Um, but as a wife of a sheriff officer, I can confirm Ms. Paula, I think the previous speaker. Cannabis is already here. Um, it is out and about a lot more than, you know, people think. Um, and I do confirm education is key, which we are definitely excited to provide to the township. Uh, my question is for the council. I do know there was a potential application process for the actual cannabis licensed entity. I have not seen the final application posted. Uh, we are in the process of the conversion with the CRC. And I just wanted to see if that document was ready, uh, if there's still some tweaks to it and when we can expect that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. And Mr. Fagan, next.
Sally Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Kerwin.
I'm sorry, my my apologies, my mistake. Uh, Kevin Kerwin, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record. Sally, you're on deck.
Uh, Kevin Kerwin, Seven Valley Way.
Mr. Kerwin, if possible, could you just speak a little louder? It's a little difficult to hear you.
Sorry, I'll I'll speak a little louder. Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better. Thank you.
Okay, um, I I just wanted to kind of echo some of the concerns that were made earlier. It sounds like at the beginning of the meeting, apparently, uh, Councilwoman Scarpa will get her uh, her ability to appoint. And uh, I just hope that that's protected and um, that that's pretty much all I had to say about that. I trust that the council will make the right decision when it comes to that.
Thank you so very much. We appreciate your comments.
Sally Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sally Malanga, fifty-seven Ridge Road. Good evening. I want to make you aware of our Green West Orange members dismay and disappointment in the conduct of the mayor in regards to the reappointment of certain members of the zoning board and in so denying Councilwoman Susan Scarpa her appointment. It was no mistake. And the ordinance on the agenda, which I understand has now been pulled this evening, uh, should it come back, was an effort to dispossess the public of its fair representation. In addition, the chair of the zoning board needs to rotate among the members. It cannot be reappointed or reappoint himself over and over again. Zoning board member appointments should last only four years in concurrence with their appointee, to be fair. Appointees should be participating in the meetings. Many of them do not. Naturally, our members wa- wonder why this happened, just as a major application, Daughters of Israel, uh, making its unrealistic expansion application to the zoning board for a ten-year project that will disrupt its section of Pleasant Valley Way for a decade. The mayor should not be tampering with the rules of the zoning board and using legislation to further the appointments of some favored members over others. Our Green West Orange members have been writing and calling us for the last several days about this. We want your commitment, council members and administration, that the rule of law, equity and inclusion are mandates under which we run West Orange and nothing less. Thank you. I look forward to your commitment.
Thank you, Ms. Malanga. Mr. Fagan, are there any other?
Any members of the public wishing to address the Township Council from the Zoom audience? Please raise your hand at this time. Yes, Council President, we have um, uh, Kevin Malanga, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Uh, good evening, Council President, members of the council. Kevin Malanga, fifty-seven Ridge Road. I spent a quite a number of hours this past weekend reading through old zoning board minutes trying to figure out who from the council appointed who on the zoning board. I think one of the problems is the lack of discipline in the preparation of the minutes. So we don't know who the appointments are by. It should be required by the town council that the zoning board specifically state who is a member of the zoning board, who is an alternate and which council person appointed that zoning board member and that alternate. So when the swearing in takes place, it's very clear to the public how that swearing in occurred. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malanga. And Mr. Fagan, one last final call for anyone.
Yes, we do. Mel Valdez, welcome to the meeting. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mel Julie Valdez, sixteen Elm Street. Um, I'm just uh, providing comments regarding um, the issue with um, Councilwoman Susan Scarpa um, originally not being able to appoint um, her own zoning appointee, uh, her own appointee to the zoning board of adjustment. And I also would like to know why the zoning board of adjustment meetings, um, the recordings are not made available to the public. I have attended many of these meetings and I feel as though the West Orange um, residents should should know what's going on and should be able to hear the tone and the decorum of these meetings, which in many instances are not civil and do not give a fair chance to many of the people that are presenting. Um, so I think that, you know, I I would hope that the council would look into this because the fact that Mr. Malanga just made a point about the meetings, meeting minutes not being in order. Um, having a recording would then supplement that and have a a record. So if anyone would like to go back to these um, meetings, they then they can understand exactly what happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez.
Any other member of the Zoom audience wishing to address the Township Council, please raise your hand at this time. Council President, seeing none.
Thank you. Public comment is now closed and we will respond to public comment. I will start um, with the responses. All right. So thank you, uh, Mr. Fagan, for all of your information regarding West Orange and happenings around town. Um, Mrs. Moses, who inquired about recycling. Um, and if everything is commingled, what is the process? So before we proceed through the remainder of commentary, since that is something that the administration can respond to, I'd like to ask the administration to do so.
Uh, we absolutely um, are recycling. We continue to, we we will uh, look into the matter that was raised here with uh, this evening as as an exception to that. But we, the law, the law requires it, our ordinances require it, and we have contracts that we will enforce. Um, additionally, our contracts do conclude this year. And we are looking to put together RFPs for next, the the next set of contracts. And this is an issue that we're looking at, um, placing additional controls uh, and and ways to deal with this particular issue um, when it occurs. It is particularly difficult right now um, because we've, we've, we we do know that there's, there's not a lot of markets for recycling. So there's incentives uh, for um, that for for in sight recycling not to occur. Um, but um, it is, it is an issue that we're aware of and we are acutely um, looking at ways to curtail it. So we appreciate the input from the public about it. Um, we we encourage you to continue to let us know when you see it so that we can call uh, our, call our operator uh, on these infractions when they occur.
Thank you.
Council President, if I may follow up.
Sure.
Mr. Gross, we've been speaking about this issue now for over a year. And at a prior council meeting, you uh, told us that there would be some adjustment made with regard to uh, what we're paying our garbage collectors because we're paying for two trucks. And based on the commentary from many people in town, not just Ms. Moses, but almost every part of town has made at least one complaint about uh, the same exact issue. Uh, so they are sending one truck and we're paying for two. Um, what adjustment, if any, has been made in the amount that we are paying them?
Uh, this month alone, we're we're looking at uh, somewhere in the area, reduction of somewhere near thirty thousand dollars um, for things that we've been able to verify. And so complaints are complaints and and what's verifiable ma- may be different than the complaints, but we investigate every complaint we get. And if we can verify it and confirm it, uh, we will um, we would take action. We've, we've done some cleanups and things of that nature as well. Um, so we we we're not shy about, you know, going back at them and 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 uh, recouping the funds when necessary. This is a difficult one, though, because again, every, you know, we 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 need to be able to document um, what what the infractions are and and unfortunately, a lot of times it's anecdotal stories that we get long after the fact and not catching them actually doing it.
So to that point, uh, two, two things. One, please forward to me, uh, the adjustments that have been um, made with regard to what we're paying for this service. Um, you know, regarding the recycling being commingled. Second thing is uh, video evidence in acceptable form of verifying uh, these um.
O- o- only, only if we can um, uh, from a legal perspective, validate, validate the 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 action. So it's, it is
So.
The difficult. Uh, we, I I I'd rather not discuss the tactics that we're, we'd like to use in terms of of enforcing this, but we 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 encourage you, the the public, to let us know what's going on. But what we can do with that information is is in inform ourselves and help us get an idea so that we can try to catch it happening ourselves.
So what the public, what information will the public have to provide that would help you in your enforcement effort?
What they're doing right now in terms of letting us, when they see it occurring, letting us know that it occurred.
So that's date, that's time, that's address, and that's any video or picture or evidence that they may have.
Evidence, absolutely.
Okay, thank, thank you. That that's it for me.
Okay, no problem. And so I was going to say a picture is worth a thousand words. Um, so if if there is any evidence, you know, when you make those complaints, if you can make sure you forward that to the administration, then they will govern themselves accordingly. Uh, Ms. Tweetin, thank you so much for making us aware of Alpha Kappa Alpha's engagement with the upcoming human trafficking presentation on January thirtieth. Um, we had a tremendous amount of comments regarding the zoning board. I am not going to belabor that point. It has been clearly articulated um, that our councilwoman Susan Scarpa will have her appointment. Um, we also talked. Thank you. Um, we also talked a lot about cannabis. Um, we do have that ordinance on for um, review this evening. So in keeping with trying to be timely and not the labor points when we have to go back and discuss them, I'm going to ask my colleagues if we can defer all of the comments regarding cannabis, since it is on our agenda until we get to that portion of the agenda. In addition, we had um, other comments again about the recording of the zoning board meetings and their availability. Um, so again, that is something I will yield to the administration or our legal department or even our clerk. Um, if she would be so kind as to just let us know what the process is. Okay, so if someone can just advise us of what the zoning board process is.
We'll, we'll look into that. Um, you know, they they're an autonomous body, so we will look in to see what they're doing.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then they'll come back and we'll provide that information and updates and accurate information at the next council meeting. Thank you. That um, completes my comments, Councilwoman Catalina.
Sure, thanks, Council President. Um, so I'll start from the top. Joe Fagan, you know, thank you for all the information that you always provide and uh, no wing it on, it was a great um, opening for them. And they were quite busy and um, and I'm just going to ask folks when these new businesses open, uh, to be, please be patient. Um, you know, they're, you know, the working shortage crisis for employees has hit a lot of industries hard. Um, they have, were fortunate um, to have a good volume of people working for them, but it takes time for a lot of these new businesses to get up and trained and running smoothly. And they did a great job that day. So everything was delicious. I hope you're able to support them. It's very important. And that brings me to um, as far as Ms. Moses's complaints and other residents um, with shortages with with staffing. And I'm glad we are finding them um, because we need to. Uh, it's unfortunate for them. I have seen recycling trucks all throughout the township, but there has been times where they've had employees not show up and there's been a shortage. And um, again, so I I, you know, I'm confident administration will take care of this. And if we could all receive that report as well, Mr. Gross, I'd be appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Tweetin, uh, great program. I'm going to try to get in there and it's just amazing. I remember years ago when I watched the movie Taken and just my jaw dropped and my daughter was at that young age back then. And um, scary, just scary stuff. And to know that it's here in our country is unreal. So we have, but we have to educate our youth because we were all young and we all thought nothing, whatever would happen to us and that, you know, we're a bunch of parents are a bunch of worry warts. Uh, but unfortunately, there's a lot of evil people out there and we have to educate them. So thank you all for for doing that. Um, Mr. Draper Scott, um, Mr. Draper Scott, I only have one appointment and that is Alice Weiss. I've only always had one appointment. So again, misinformation out there, unfortunately, our clerk had a, a list that had my name twice on it. I don't even know who the appointment was, but I only had one person, but that was quickly corrected. And you were aware, made aware of that. So it's disappointing for you to come here this evening to say that I had two appointments when I never did and you, and you knew otherwise. So that was a little disappointing. But you know, Ms. Scarpa, we, you know, you know, you and I both spoke and, you know, we're full supportive of you having a zoning appointment, just like everyone should. I was not in support of the ordinance this evening. But I am support of not, you know, we have these boards. And I'll give you a perfect example with the Public Relations Commission. We don't always have folks that want to step up and serve as the, the chairperson. Because it's a lot of work. And just to even get people to volunteer for the commissions is a lot of work for folks. And we're so glad that we do have a lot of new volunteers this year. But again, you know, they, they're, they're new. Some of them may want to step up. But again, having that experience on these commissions. So I'm not opposed to if those bodies want to reelect the same chairpeople. I'm not opposed to that. So that will be up to those bodies of, of commissioners. So I, I would support for those folks to, if they get reelected by, you know, as long as the election occurs and everyone is aware of that, I'm in support of that. Because not everybody always has the time to step up for these organizations. So and if there is, and there's a full election, that's, that's great too. I'll talk about the cannabis. I'm, I thank you to all the speakers who came out for that. It's very important. What's frustrating is I, I wish folks were out a, a year ago. But that's our fault. That didn't, it didn't get out there in the public the way it did. So a lot of folks weren't aware of what was going on with, with the cannabis ordinances. And, you know, and again, we have the amendments tonight because we have to make, you know, it's here. I originally put up a motion to not to have it in the township yet when it first came out. But I didn't get any support. So that went, that didn't go anywhere. But it's here and we need to deal with it and, and we will. So later on, I look forward to another healthy, robust conversation on it. As usual, and again, and, and when I do, I mean, I, I do appreciate all the investors because I know a lot of you put everything you have in this industry. And we appreciate you looking at the township. It's, it's just tough. You know, we got to balance everything out. And as I said, we're going to have to work at this as a community. It's been tough and, but we got to get it right because our important, our children, the most important thing that we have in this community and we have to make sure every, everyone is safe. I guess that's it for now. Judging by these other comments, we'll talk about that. If I missed anything, I'm sure one of my other colleagues will catch it. Oh, and Mr. Cameron, I want to thank you. You're on our Public Relations Commission, a perfect example of a new appointment. And you were gave some great commentary and thoughts and ideas to our last meeting. So, so thank you and, and, and welcome to all the new folks on the commissions with their new appointments. Thank you, Council President.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. Councilman Redford.
Thank you, Council President, to Mr. Fagan and Mr. Pagliisi, as always, thank you for your timely information. Want to address a couple of things. I've already addressed Ms. Moses's concerns with regard to garbage. I echo the sentiments of my colleagues with regard to the human trafficking Zoom. So looking forward to increasing awareness and giving people some tools to help prevent it in their own families and their own communities. Several folks spoke about the zoning issue. I know it's been pulled. And I understand that Ms. Councilwoman Scarpa will have her appointment as she should. But to imply that, that there wasn't something wrong with this process, I think, is not accurate. The, the language that was included in the proposed changes to the ordinance. In addition to seem to be rushed, which leads its own, need to have my own concerns about why are we rushing? In addition to that, it is in direct contradiction to representative government. To award any one council person, at least the way that it was written, based on the highest number of votes, the ability to appoint to the zoning board would have precluded me and our council president from being able to make appointments when we were elected. Because neither one of us were the highest vote getters. And so, you know, my, my, aside from it just being flat out wrong, the question then becomes why? Why are we doing this? Why is it important to limit this particular appointment? Why is it important to communicate a set of facts that don't seem to hold water? She was told and I was told that there was only one appointment, but we know that there were two. And that is a problem. We've talked about this multiple times in this chamber. We, when we do things like that, we erode the public trust. And when we come to a point where we need the public trust to be able to do big things, challenging things, or make difficult decisions that affect everybody, we, they need to have confidence that we have removed politics and personalities from the decision-making process. So I, you know, I, I was extremely disappointed. I reached out to all of our neighboring towns to find out about how they appoint people to their zoning board and what their rules are. And there are different setups in different towns. But at the end of the day, each one of those towns has a system that is fair that represents the people that actually participate in the election, that represents the interest of the residents. And whatever this thing was that was presented to us on this particular issue certainly did not do that. So I wanted to echo the complaints of the public and also put my displeasure on the record. Thank you to Mr. Scott and the West Orange African Heritage Organization for alerting us to the Black History Month program, which will be at Edison School, 1:00 PM on February 19th. I know that several folks spoke about cannabis. I am going to honor our council president's request not to address the issues that are going to be discussed in the ordinance that's coming up later tonight. However, with regard to, to, two things I wanted to correct. One, I do understand that there is concern about location. But Shop Right was mentioned and a particular project across the street from Shop Right was mentioned. Just for everyone's awareness, it is, when, when the caller or the public commenter said across the street, they meant literally across Prospect. Prospect is in Essex Green. This proposed site is on the other side of Prospect Avenue, which Essex Green is on. It is in a separate building. It's not part of the mall. There are other buildings over there, including the Unique Performance Arts Center, where my daughters have all danced for 18 years. I spoke with the owner there to determine what their appetite was for a cannabis operation so close. And because the parking lots are not shared and there's no way for patrons of one business to interact with patrons of the other, there was no concern there. So I would be upset if it was across the street from a space where we would consider it the modern equivalent of the public square. But this particular site on the other side of Prospect Avenue, I don't think meets that test. Now, what she did point out that I do want to highlight in support of is enforcement with regard to smoking. One of our concerns has been that folks will walk up and down Main Street smoking cannabis because we have laws regarding where you can and cannot smoke cigarettes. And our guidance from the state has been that our cannabis laws have, with regard to public smoking, have to mirror those at the state level. So I think, I think we do need to talk about enforcement. It does not belong in the police department, as our state attorneys general and pretty much everyone in here agrees. I do think it belongs in the health department. As I've spoken with my council colleagues, that's a budgetary concern because we would need folks that could actually do the enforcement in, in parks and along the spaces that they shouldn't be, which would be schools and other spaces where it's restricted. So we, we do have to have a real conversation about how we enforce where people can smoke. I don't want, and I don't think anyone wants, West Orange to be seen as the Wild West when it comes to cannabis. I don't think it's seen that way now. And I am fully supportive of recreational adult use as well as medicinal. And I, and I think that we can do that in a way that makes sense for West Orange without impacting families in such a drastic way as has been feared by some and experienced by others. I think that's it. Let me just make sure. Got one more page. I do think in the conversation around the zoning board, a couple of things have come up. One, I, I do agree that with Mr. Malanga that we need to clarify the roles, whether someone is a member versus an alternate and who made the appointment and, and do that kind of stuff. And I, I think that's, I don't think anyone would have any pushback on that. I do think the appointment process to all of our commissions needs some, some clarification. What happens in, if someone were to pass away while they were serving in a board? What happens if someone gets deathly ill or, or has a life change that requires them to no longer be able to provide the kind of time that the board would need? We don't have a mechanism or, or what happens if there's an adverse situation with that individual and, and they're no longer desirable as a, as an appointee? We don't have a mechanism to remove them. We can ask for their resignation and in general, responsible adults will provide that.
So can we, can we finish that conversation under new matters? Because I think that is a new matter. Yes, I do.
So we do need to address what happens in the interim. And we've had some conversation about this already.
Thank you.
I think that is it for me. With the exception of the one mile radius, there would be literally nowhere in town that we could have a cannabis of any kind if we had a one mile radius from schools and parks and houses of worship. That's it for me, Council President.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Councilwoman Scarpa.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I want to say thank you to Mr. Pagliisi and Mr. Fagan. You are both invaluable assets to us and thanks for all the wonderful information you provide. To Mrs. Moses, I think we talked about your recycling and I hope we are going to move forward on that. Mrs. Tweetin, I have always been concerned about human trafficking and I am so glad you're bringing this to our attention because in the last year or so, especially with what's going on at the border, this has become an incredible problem that most of us are not aware of. And I really applaud your efforts and I will be looking forward to it. Mr. Scott, congratulations. I'm looking forward to working with you and I am very happy to see everyone out here who came out and so eloquently held us accountable on the issue of the zoning board. Thank you to Mr. Philip Littonoff. I appreciate your support. Mrs. Morelli, as always. Sheila Lefkowitz. Rachel Hershey. Kevin Kerwin. Sally Malanga. Kevin Malanga and Mel Valdez. Thank you so much to all of you. We really, I think all of the points have been made with the problems of the way our ordinance is written. So I'm not going to re-go through that again. But we do have some problems that need to be firmed up. But what I do want to tell you is that I had a, a really nice conversation with Mayor McCartney earlier this evening. And I want to thank her and our lawyers for clarifying all of the facts and getting to the bottom of the zoning appointment issue and getting it resolved for us. So I, I do very much appreciate that. And I hope that we can all move forward in more of a climate of trust and respect as we go forward. I believe a lot of these problems surrounding this issue have to do with notice given to the public about changes to ordinances. We have seen over and over again that we, we get these ordinances only a few days before we really need to make a, make a different, think about what they're really saying. And as, as Ms. Hershey's described, they're incredibly complex. They take a lot of work, a lot of due diligence. I mean, I really believe the public and the council should have these a week before, not just a short time before. And we can't have these red line changes being put in front of us the day before we have to make such important decisions. And I hope that my council colleagues will join me in encouraging our administration to be a little bit more responsible about how they, they give this information to us and more respectful. Because we have a fiduciary responsibility to the public to make good decisions. And it takes a lot of time. I don't think anyone realizes, I know when I took this job, I didn't realize how much time it was going to take. I've only been here now less than 30 days. And I could tell you, I have put in more hours between phone calls, trying to learn legislation, looking at five different versions of a cannabis ordinance that I knew nothing about, visiting cannabis sites, trying to learn about it. It's, it's overwhelming. And so we need to make sure that we get information in a more timely manner. The other issue is, I'd like to express a general concern about the ex post facto changes to legislation. You know, if we're changing a law, we can't do that. We can't change a law to reflect something that's we've already done. We have to be much more thoughtful about the way we, the way we put these ordinances together. And I agree, the language that we've seen on this ordinance relating to the highest vote getter just doesn't seem very fair and just doesn't seem like the way we should be doing business. And I think we don't have to belabor it, but I think we've all kind of talked about it now for enough that we will come back with more responsible legislation that we can articulate in a more clear and concise fashion to the public.
Does that complete your comments?
That completes my comments. I'll save the cannabis stuff for.
Well, I appreciate you. Thank you. Madam Clark.
Consent agenda, approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, January 2nd, 2023 and January 10th, 2023.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Correspondence from Mayor McCartney submitting for the Township Council's advice and consent. The reappointment of Dr. Marge Mingan to the West Orange Public Library Board effective January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2027.
Consent.
Correspondence from Mayor McCartney submitting for Township Council's advice and consent. The reappointment of Sunjana Thirumala Shridhar. I'm sorry if I butchered that. To the West Orange Public Library Board effective January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2027.
Consent.
Bills, none. Resolutions, council president, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Council colleagues, do we have any questions regarding any of the resolutions before we start pulling them?
So I guess my, I do have a question. I'm not sure if I'm going to wind up pulling it.
Okay. Let's, let's see if we can address your question first.
Thank you, Council President. So Mr. Gross, item D 28-23, the grant for the $100,000.
for the hundred thousand dollars to carry out the project to replace the dugouts at Degnan Park. So my question to you is, um, is there a, is this time? Is there a time limit for this grant? And the reason being is, so I had a conversation on my liaison, uh, one of my Board of Liaison meetings a while ago. The dugouts were supposed to be purchased by the school district because we had replaced the fields at the baseball fields at the high school. And Dr. Cascone had made that arrangement when he was there. Now, we all know he he left and uh we have Dr. Schoen. And so in one of our uh meetings, we had a conversation and she, you know, they weren't gonna carry out that um uh, I guess that uh request or that arrangement, I should say. So with that being said, I would like to have one more conversation with them. Um, because we, I believe Mr. did put in uh benches there and it's not as sufficient as the boys' baseball team has. These are more you know, these are more um more like the the baseball field ones, not, you know, just the benches that they have that's covered and all. And not to say with Title IX and the girls shouldn't have with the with the boys' team has. Um, because I'm all one for that and I'm always, you know, my record shows that I'm always for these projects. However, uh, if there's not a timeline, I like to pull this this evening uh to have one more conversation with the school district because I believe, you know, they were gonna be responsible for this. And I I need, we need to figure this out.
I I think there's time to have that conversation, but I would not hold up on accepting the grant. Because he, because you would, you won't accept the grant either way. I get, you know, because that that benefits the taxpayer.
So my my other question is with the grant, could we use those? Because I know they're project driven. Would we be able to use that grant for a different project at the school district? Does.
Don't know the answer to that tonight. I can't tell you that. Um, so.
Okay.
So then my question, follow up to that would be if we accept it as in its current language, are we not accepting it so that the funds can be allocated to replace the dugouts? And if we can't transfer that money, is there any risk of us postponing so we can have a true conversation of losing the grant? Is there a deadline for the grant application?
There, the the um, the 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 grant pro- project itself really doesn't care where the match comes from. They're they they want to know and your your adopting the resolution doesn't actually allocate the funds. It just says you intend to allocate the funds. And therefore, whether you allocate it by getting participation from Board of Ed or allocated through uh through other capital means. Um, that is is irrelevant to this particular resolution. So I, you know, I I think that you were always hesitant when somebody's offering you grant money
Sure.
to accept it. And and um, you know, if it's a project that that makes sense to us.
Um, and I don't want to accept it if we are gonna, you know, obviously this helps the school district, which that I I I don't mind doing at all, but if we're able to help us with another project on our end as well, I I wanted to know that information too. But you don't have that answer.
I I just don't know the answer to that because it wasn't explored that way. So I I, you know, I I can't give you an answer, an answer on that this evening.
Okay, but if we pass this now, we have time to.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the 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 we'll certainly, you've you've raised the issue with this, you've passed it. We will not allocate the 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 funds uh without you giving you the opportunity to have that conversation. Uh, and and you would pass it assuming assuming that if you cannot um, do that, you want to move forward with the project. Uh, if if you're having doubts about moving forward with the project, that's a different discussion. But if if the need, you know, i- if if this is something that you're um wanting to move forward with, then I think you should consider passing conceding.
Do any of my other council colleagues have any questions regarding this particular resolution? Okay.
Any other?
No, I I do. Just so in a similar vein, so wha- what is the process for choosing? Like, do we prioritize um soccer, basketball, and football, and baseball, and whatever these other needs are and then say, okay, well, this is the one that's in the greatest state of disrepair? Or the one that provides the best bang for the buck? Like, it, what is the process for choosing how we would use a grant like this?
What's usually driven by, and again, I'm, I can't tell you tonight specifically about this particular grant. But it's usually driven by the focus of the grant. Uh, and it and and how it fits into what we're doing. It could be the size, it could be could be requirements within the grant that makes it th- this project fit to it. It could be just the amount of money that there are limitations that this this project would fit into this. So there's a lot of different factors that go into it. I mean, we 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 look at all of our um facilities and and try to match up different sources, whether they be ours or others, to the projects based on our availability of those funds.
Now, is that.
And 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 the immediate need. But 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 grants, you know, there's the 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 grant givers, you know, they they give you um.
Is that a function carried out by you or your office or the administration? Or is that a function carried out by the grant writers? In other words, are they looking at how to match up these things? And then they say, hey, you know, we may be able to get some money for dugouts. Or we may be able to get some money for sports fields. You tell us how you'd like to use it.
The answer is yes. It's both. It's 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 a, we were actively engaged with our grant writers. So they'll find things and they'll come back and say, and 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 we have a lot of conversations with them about what ideas that we may have or things that are important to us. So we regularly interact with them. So that if if, you know, if if there had been, likely there was a conversation at some point in time about dugouts, you know, and and about the fact that we were, and then if they, if that conversation did occur and maybe they came across something, they they would send an email saying, hey, this just came out. What do you think uh about the dugouts? Or it might be just, hey, this came out. What do you think? And they would give us criteria. So it's, it is definitely an interactive process.
Into the need for basketball courts
Sure.
in town, uh certainly even just repairing some of those that we currently have.
Yeah, I mean, the 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 we, the the director of Recreation Director um meets with them regularly, talks about the things that are needed within within the department. So if you're asking me about specifically about basketball, I'll find out about that. I I'm not involved in every conversation that goes on.
I believe with this project, this was the last piece of that Degnan Park complex because we have a whole renovation all the way around, even with our 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 senior park. So this is just like the last piece of it. And again, there was discrepancy of how we were gonna get that done. So I'm assuming engineering found this grant to say, oh, we can get this done because it wasn't moving anywhere, but.
No, no, it sounds great.
Make sure.
Yeah, and it looks great, by the way.
So do we want to pull that? Is that satisfy your question?
Hold it and I'll I'll could, I'll follow up with the school district and Mr. Gross.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anything else my colleagues would like to pull? Or or questions? We were doing questions first. I did have a question. Um, I'm sorry, Mr. Gross. Regarding uh twenty-six twenty-three shared services agreement with the Borough of Essex fails. Is this a a shared service agreement we've had previously? Is this something new?
Yeah, we've had it for many, many, many years.
Okay.
Uh, and it's a, it's a, it's a nice little um mutual agreement that, you know, allows us to help them and they pay us and it works fine.
And as following up with twenty-seven twenty-three, is that same as well? Something in continuation to a service with Roseland for the animal control services? Okay, great. Those were the questions that I had. And if there are no other questions, um, Madam, you have more questions?
Just one comment. I just, I just want to thank, because I see him here, Mrs. Maraldo. We have change order for the library and he had given all of us a tour this past week. And just appreciate the time and just to see the progress and uh to thank, you know, to everyone on the committee, uh, Mr. QB and um, uh, Marge Minion, who just got reappointed by the mayor. Just outstanding job and being on top of everything. So appreciate that. Looking forward to uh that site opening. And uh, you know, be, it'll be great to see. So it's coming out beautifully.
I do want to thank my colleagues for just being on the ready to even get those site visits done so that we are knowledgeable about the status of the uh library. Thank you, Madam Clark.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some, I'm sorry. We don't allow public comment at this time. We don't allow public comment until we get to the actual.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented.
Madam Clark.
Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-seven oh eight dash twenty-three. An ordinance creating Chapter Two, Section sixty-two of the revi- of the Revised General Ordinances of West Orange entitled Older Adults Advisory Board. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So move.
My second.
You should probably.
Oh, okay. Okay. Just for the record then, can we switch that? Um, Councilwoman Scarpa will move. Make the motion and I will second. Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
This is a time for public comment.
Is there anyone who would like to comment in the audience present or on the Zoom call regarding ordinance twenty-seven oh eight dash twenty-three regarding us older adults advisory board?
Anyone in the Zoom audience requiring public comment ordinance twenty-seven oh eight dash twenty-three, now is the time to raise your hand. Council President, we have twenty-six attendees and no one has their hand.
Public comment is closed. Madam Clark.
Is there a motion to approve? Actually, does the council have any commentary?
No, we don't. We're excited.
I just want to say thank you. I I do want a little commentary. Um, we have been working very hard to make this happen. Actually, it was Mrs. Morelli, Leanne Zalino, and Councilman Kokoviac, who initially proposed this ordinance and had really worked hard to try to get a senior citizen advisory board, which is now termed, of course, our older adults, back in twenty fifteen. And if it wasn't for their work and the incredible work of Mrs. Morelli, who has forged ahead for a decade with her team of medical professionals advocating for seniors, we wouldn't be here today. So thank you, Ms. Morelli.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve twenty-seven oh eight dash twenty-three?
Yes. So moved. Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Ordinances on first reading, twenty-seven oh nine dash twenty-three, bond ordinance providing for phases IIB and IIIB. Oh, boy.
Four, five.
Two, three, four, five.
Thank you. Yes, of the local units allocable share of the flood mitigation facilities project of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties. Buying in the township appropriating six million five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of six million five hundred sixty-five thousand dollars bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Second.
You. Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Twenty-seven ten dash twenty.
But before we move on, our council colleague had a couple of questions. Were your questions answered regarding that project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then we're good.
Okay. Thank you.
Twenty-seven ten dash twenty-three, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee's status as a township employee. And under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel, is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So move. Second.
Councilwoman Castelino?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Twenty-seven eleven dash twenty-three was pulled. Twenty-seven twelve dash twenty-three, an ordinance amending Chapter Five, Section thirty-four point three and Section thirty-four point six of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange Licensed Cannabis Entities. Is there a motion to prove a approve on first reading?
So move.
Second.
So can we ask questions before we vote?
Yeah. Oh, oh, go ahead. Yeah, so now would be the time.
Yeah.
Well, are we, are we?
Well, reason for this is I have a couple of questions I need to wrap my head around for legal. Because I don't want to prove it.
Well, my question would be, are we doing it on first reading? Is the first reading motion to move for it to be read on first reading? Do we have discussion before? Or do we, do we have the reading? Do we approve it on?
In in general, we don't discuss ordinances on first reading, but you are able to if you want to. If there's something that's controversial or you have, then we encourage you to talk about it because maybe then it can be changed or corrected going forward. But um, there's no requirement. And generally, uh councils across the state of New Jersey and probably the country don't generally talk about uh ordinances on first reading. They don't talk about them until they're on per second.
We can. Why don't?
Well, we've been, we've been having it, but we've been voting.
Right.
And then I, you know, because.
So let me, let me state for the record, because this is part of the discussion. Um, as Council President, I have taken the liberty to reach out to our CRC as well as our Economic Development um Office for the State of New Jersey. And I have spoken to Jesus Alkazar, who is the a senior advisor to our governor. And they are going to avail themselves, they are going to avail themselves to educate us as local elected officials. Um, they are willing to come in and hold a session. And the topics that they will cover uh for us as council members are educating um us on the impact of cannabis. You voted for cannabis, now what? Um, making sure we're up to speed on some of the health concerns that may or may not be accurate um information. And we would like to do this sooner than later. I would like for us to be educated before we have to have this on the second reading. Um, he has said that he will come to us at our leisure. Um, I have spoken to the administration about what best would be um the capacity for us to engage in this type of um informational session. We can have a special meeting. Um, when we do have a special meeting, we still have to have public comment as a part of the meeting, the special meeting. However, um, Jesus Alkazar has asked it and and demanded basically that this is not for him to come and ask, answer questions to the public. This is for him to come and answer questions to the elected officials.
Is the public invited?
The public will be invited to attend, but they will not be able to ask questions directly of him. And it'll also be an opportunity for us, if we have questions, that we can send them to him in advance to make sure he covers the concerns that we have. I would like to um recommend that we do this next week in a special meeting on Tuesday if possible.
So.
But what for your calendar?
I, I'm good as far as my research and being on the task force. And so if the newer members need the educating, that's, you know, don't go by my schedule.
I'd like to see the public involved. I I, there's, they're getting a lot of calls and I'd like something to go out to the public, letting them know that we are going to be having this, particularly to the school community.
It would have to be publicly noticed.
Right, ca- council, council president, just for the edification of the new council member, Scarpa. Um, the council can only meet in public, can't meet in private.
Yeah.
I know. I just want to make sure I had that right.
Okay.
All right.
But I want the public invited.
Language.
You know, not just in the newspaper.
It would also be noticed on the website as all the meetings are.
Okay. Is there any way we can notice it in the school community? At a PT with, through the PTAs or the Board of Education meetings? Because I'm getting more and more calls from parents as they learn about this that have concerns.
Yes.
And I think they need to be included in the discussion. Even though they can't ask questions, they need to at least know what's happening so that they can come at me and have their questions down.
Say, our council liaison would be the one who would make the notification and inform the the Board of Ed. So.
Oh, to the Board of Ed.
Um, through some kind of, you know, yeah, reasonable.
Well, they were having their own education, because every time I have a meeting with them, they keep saying, in their health classes, they're handling their own education with the students.
Don't know about this. They're not, we're not educating the public. The public is in the dark. Let's be honest here.
Well, I I I, let let us not debate. We we have, we have an ordinance that we're discussing. And then we have a opportunity to identify.
I want to ask you. I appreciate the point of establish. I want to ask you. I appreciate the point of establishments versus entities, and I want Mr. Kaiser. Because here's the thing, we keep talking about the numbers of establishments, entities. At the end of the day, you know, the original vote was for four altogether, no matter what business, whether it was a cultivator, whether it was a retail, we were, it was number four. Then micro businesses came in, and then we found out later on, micro businesses were unlimited, which was disappointing to find out. So now we need to put a cap on that. Now, we also had given out letters of support. So where does this leave us? We gave out six letters of support, or seven. We took back one. Some of you want to give back the seventh one. So how do we go about capping any of this when we already gave out letters of support? So we go down to, say, six, or you can't go down less than what we we gave, I assume.
Well, maybe.
Same questions. I mean.
Because, because let me just go back with one that I want to share with the public, because the whole premise of this in the beginning with these letters of support was, you know, you're going to give four or five letters of support, state's only going to approve. You'll be lucky if you get one or two approved in your town. Well, not us. We hit the jackpot. State's approving everybody. So this is why we're in the situation that we're in. So now we have the situation where these approvals are coming through. From the state. The original intent was to give out a couple of extra letters of support, because not everybody's going to get approved, but surprise, surprise, shame on us. So how do we go about dealing with this situation? And what should the language be?
Well, you know, in fairness, again, this is Mr. Moon's thing. It's not, I didn't prepare this ordinance. I don't, I had familiarity with the state statute, which is three hundred and some pages long. It's not something I've chosen to specialize in or consider carefully. I think you ought to make clear all of your questions on the record tonight so that he can look at this, you know, we can look at the tape, the tape of the meeting and and see what questions there are, and so he can answer them, because they're really going to come into the fore at the, on second reading. I don't know why there's a difference. I don't know what the difference between establishment and entity is. I don't know why that, you had suggested that that change came into play with this ordinance?
Uh, yes.
Okay, I don't, I don't know why there was a change in the language. I think we generally want to keep language as consistent as possible from, you know, throughout, but there may be a reason for it. I'm not aware of it. I don't know what the difference would be. An entity means like a corporation or an LLC, and establishing just means a place. So it could be a sole proprietor that had that, you know, facility. That would be kind of unusual, frankly, now in almost any business, but.
And then I had also requested that the, which I, I don't, unless I'm missing it. Unfortunately, I got so tied up with the other ordinance with the zoning today that I didn't get all my answers, questions answered on this one. So my other concern was with the ownership of the, the ownership documentation that when a owner, especially in LLC, they change ownership, you know, interest in the business that the township be notified. And I know Mr. Trank was going to have that put in. I just don't see where that.
It's not in this one that's been circled.
I have a similar concern.
Yeah.
I would be surprised if that wasn't a requirement of the state statute.
Well, it is. See, this is the whole thing. So, so when this first began, my intent, let's make this easy, let's mirror everything the ABC law does. But in the states, by the state's request, they didn't want to mirror the ABC laws because of the situation where if there's someone that has infraction, they could still get a cannabis license where an ABC law, you cannot. So that's why we are not mirroring the ABC laws, which actually that is a component of this ABC law with the ownership. So life would have been so much easier in the beginning of this process if everything mirrored the ABC laws, but that was not the intent of.
But remember alcohol. The ABC laws grew out of prohibition and the end of prohibition.
I know, I know.
Situation, we're coming out of prohibition with cannabis too.
Yeah, but that's different.
So, so, and specifically, and I think this is an important point from Mr. Moon to consider. While the state does require disclosure of the ownership interest in each license, in each business that applies for a license, they don't require, at least as far as I'm aware, changes in ownership if an owner is an LLC. For example, if I have a, a, a business and I have a partner who is forty percent on, it is only, the partner is an LLC, and they own forty percent of the business. Now, that LLC may be comprised of multiple other LLCs. It could, that ownership interest in the forty percent could change without triggering notification to us. It could also add new owners to that forty percent without triggering notification to us, as long as that forty percent owner is still the same. I'm getting in the weeds, but what it does is it allows people to mask their ownership interest behind a second level of LLC, which could put us in a position where we don't want to have that, especially if it's someone who's been a habitual offender in other districts or even in our own municipality, we may not want them as an owner.
I asked that question, and, and that is one of the reasons why he said, I need to show up and answer you all's questions. Because that is, I, I don't believe the law still stipulates.
I would be, I would be shocked.
But I want that in. We want that in. I, I, I understand what we want in, but I'm just speaking to his statement.
And I have, along the same lines, I have an issue where there is not full disclosure. I think there needs to be full disclosure of all who have a financial interest in these businesses down to the very one percent.
Well, we have, we have that in our application.
Well, I don't know that we can go down to one percent, though.
We, right, the state.
Why should we have silent investors?
I think the state only requires five percent or greater. I could be wrong, but I think it's five percent.
Those are the questions, guys. These are the questions where while we're speculating, right, while we're speculating, I think the best thing for us, just given this level of conversation, is that we have Mr. Alkazar here and his representatives. He's having someone from the CRC here. So all of these questions.
They want this. This is their opponent for this. They're advocates.
They're not people who are.
We want this in our, in our legislation. I don't, I don't.
I.
Why can't we move forward with it?
No, 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 no.
I think we should.
I think we should.
I think we should. I think we should.
What do we need? I need Mr. Trank to, to write it.
To be here if we're looking at any cannabis legislation. This is ridiculous.
In addition, Mr. Kaiser, in addition to that issue, I don't want to beat a dead horse, because we've agreed that we're going to, Mr. Moon will review this and take these into consideration.
And any concerns we have, we need to forward them to Mr. Moon.
We will, but while we're on it now, and for the benefit of the public, I'd like them to hear as well.
And in all fairness to him, if he's asked to be here, he will be here, but he needs to be told. Yeah.
Right. Again, ordinarily, we don't have this kind of discussion on first reading. So I understand the reasons we're having it, and I understand the significance of the, of the subject matter. But it's not his fault. It's, nobody asked him to be here, or he would have been here if he was asked to be. I, I mean, you might be able to get him now, but I don't think that's really.
I don't.
So, but just to continue, and the Councilwoman Castellino mentioned earlier about the number of letters of support that we've already issued, and that we may not be able to issue licenses at a number less than that. And I, and I, I want to make sure that we can, because that was the premise under which it was presented initially. The initial letter of support did not guarantee a final approval from the township, and so we've got to make that clear somewhere.
And I think that is.
That is correct.
My recollection of all the discussions that have been, have taken place regarding this subject matter for now months, that that's always been stated.
Has that been made clear to the, to the applicants? Because they come here once they get the letter of support and they.
They still, we don't, we still don't even have the application process for them to come back and receive licensure. There, it is very clear to all of them that the letter of support does not equate to them having the capacity to open a business. We have never stated that. A letter of support is, and we've always articulated that there is a two-step process.
Wasn't the impression I gotten from listening to them, so I was wondering what the process was of.
I think you.
I thought it was a three-step process. You, you know, you give initial support, and then they have to get state approval, then they come back for your ultimate.
Two steps from us, three steps in total, but two steps from the township of West Orange.
I think we should, especially since this task force has been dissolved, I think we should reiterate to all of the current recipients of letters of support that a letter of support does not guarantee a final approval, even though that's my recollection and what we discussed up to this point. Now, I lost my train of thought. Back to me.
Okay, that, that, that language can some, can simply be added to whatever the application process for them to come back is just to, just a footnote, you know, with those pointers on it that the administration is preparing.
Well, I'm, I'm also, I also want to point out, all, all these people, entities or individuals, they've got to have legal assistance, and they, they should know all this stuff.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's buyer beware, it's still the law generally. They have, they're responsible for knowing this stuff themselves.
Councilman.
Thank you. My other, the other thing that I think we need certainly clarification on in this work session that you're setting up, I applaud you for that. Thank you. And I think Mr. Moon should be on alert about is our ability to intervene if a dispensary is found to have serviced minors or allowed straw buyers. I, I don't know that, and, and I'm happy to hear whatever, where we are in the state of the law, but I don't know that the law gives, the way our ordinance is written, we don't have the ability, or at least it's not expressly in there, to immediately intervene in that, even if we had a hearing of some sort or had some period of time to investigate. I don't think our ordinance addresses that. I think it should. And I'd like to know what the state guidance is regarding intervening in a business that serves minors, because we want to be able to stop that right away if we are alerted.
That sounds to me like a criminal offense. So, I mean, the, the, it's a police matter, a law enforcement matter, whether it's at the local level or the county level or the state level. And that's.
The ability as a police matter or a county or state matter within the enforcement to immediately shut them down until some resolution has been.
By shutting down, they'd have the ability to arrest somebody if they're on, if they had probable cause to believe they committed a crime, and it's that what you've described sounds like a crime to me. So I don't, again, I'm not familiar with all the details of the cannabis law, but I, as a criminal defense attorney and a former prosecutor, I'm thoroughly familiar with the criminal justice system. And that's, it's something that law enforcement would be involved with, not local government. Although, for example, in, in ABC matters, where we have our own ABC board, we do enforce violations as opposed to the state ABC when we have violations of local alcohol establishments. But I don't know that that would carry for, I don't think that, I think the marijuana thing would be different.
So, so that's my question. So for, like, I guess when we took this on, I envisioned us having the cannabis board be and similar to the way we operate ABC. So if there, if there are issues with licenses and whatnot, we then turn into the cannabis board after the council meeting.
I.
I don't know that we've established that.
No, we haven't, but do we need to?
Careful what you wish for, because.
Oh, I know.
So, so, I mean, my own feeling is that you're much better off with law enforcement being involved and taking.
I would love that, but I don't think law enforcement is allowed to enforce anything.
That's what we'll find out. That's what we'll find out when we meet.
So, Mr. Moon, I would hope would it take that, these concerns under consideration?
So let's make a list. Why don't we, so let's first, so Council President, so should we first, because it doesn't sound like this is passing?
Well, it's only on first reading.
Well, I'm not.
No.
Yeah, I, I, I want to table it or whatever. What do we call that again? Do we learn our lesson from the last meeting?
Well, let me, let's ask the clerk about the advertising situation, because I was amazed. Okay, right. So, so, well, but you could still table it then, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so you could still. Or postpone.
Okay.
The motion, the technical motion is postponed with specific period of time, which normally is the next meeting or the meeting, whatever you want to do.
And can we make a list?
Well, we already have a motion, so we'd have to vote that one down, and then.
Right. Well, that's to introduce it on first.
They don't even want to introduce it on first reading. They want.
Not a table.
So if they vote it down, what does that mean?
So, I, I want to, I want to be mindful, though, and remind my, my council colleagues.
Or it could be withdrawn. The motion could be withdrawn.
Yeah.
If, if you want to introduce it so that you have the option to.
Change it. We need to.
There's subsequent changes.
If you're not, if you're not going to pass it as it is, it doesn't, I don't think it matters what you do.
As a press.
Okay. Because there are subsequent changes.
Right.
Okay, so let, so is there a motion to table?
No, can we, can we have that first motion withdrawn? We would need.
It was already voted on, I think.
No, it wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't like to get lost in the procedural stuff. It's really.
Yeah, not a big deal.
To me, it's not that critical. So it's, it's just offered here for first reading. You want to draw that motion?
Let's do it.
I don't think it makes any difference.
Okay.
All right, so I'll move to table this ordinance.
So do we have to withdraw the motion?
No, he said he doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Just the. I don't think it makes, I don't think it makes a practical difference.
Right.
If you want to withdraw it and vote to withdraw it, that's fine, but I don't think.
I think we should withdraw it. I think we should do it the right way.
You want to do both withdraw? All right, so I need a first to withdraw and a second.
I move to withdraw.
A second.
Okay, Councilwoman, this is to withdraw, this is, yeah, to withdraw Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
No.
It's okay. Okay.
I'll move to table this motion.
Second.
Okay. To table. Are this ordinance from? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scarpa?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Can I just bring something up, Council President?
Okay, so when ordinances are given to me to place on a, an agenda, I right away send it to the Chronicle for advertising. So it will appear in the Chronicle Thursday and be ready to be heard at the next meeting in two weeks. We've had a lot of issues lately with these ordinances, and frankly, it's costing the town a lot of money to advertise, and then I have to re-advertise and, you know, or send a correction notice or whatever. So going forward, unless I know something absolutely needs to be adopted at that next meeting, I want to know what your thoughts are on me holding off advertising until, say, tomorrow, so it'll appear in next week's Chronicle, and then it won't be ready for the next meeting. It'll be ready for the second meeting in February.
So I don't think that's something that we can, you know, just across the boards, make a general decision on, because it's going to depend on the urgency of what that resolution or ordinance is, as needed. Yeah, I, I would say as needed.
Your thoughts on that, because.
I think this gets back to something Councilwoman Scarpa or someone else said earlier. If we get notifications soon, and Council President has been diligent about reaching out to council members about questions and concerns, if we can get them to her, so you're saying as soon as.
Thursday.
You, you don't have to put it in by Thursday, which is the same day we get the packet?
No. So I get, say I get it on Tuesday. It has to be advertised by Friday at noon.
Okay.
The week before, in order for it to get in.
So we get packets on Thursday. By Friday, the next day at noon, it goes to advertising?
Well, it goes before that, because I do it as soon as I get it. You know, just like it's, I'm on order.
Like, can we, can we, can we?
Right, and you have to have so many days in advance that it has to be advertised.
So can you hold off until Friday at noon? And if there is something that comes in our packets on Thursday, and you have some questions or concerns, can you all communicate that before Friday at noon?
I think as a general rule, it's possible, but, you know, given her schedule, maybe not.
I don't even see it till the evening.
On Thursday evening? So if there's something you have concerns about, just let us know.
That would also be a problem, because I'd have to make sure everyone's in agreement with that. That would, that would be.
Just keep it the way it is. I mean, I, I mean, we never done this. This is like pretty much the one ordinance that's been a nightmare.
And we have to get it right. I think we've all, we've all agreed and stated over and over and over again, we have to get this right.
Let's.
Yeah, and, and Council President, just, I mean.
We're going to make a list independently. We're not going to stay here tonight and make a list around the sample.
To talk about it.
I think, I think we need to. Well, like, one of the questions I have are about financial systems and accounting systems, and I don't know who is the expert on that, but I have questions about how we're going to capture our tax revenue.
So I think all of these questions can be answered. This is why I am bringing in support. Because every question that we're asking, they have an answer to. The state has an answer to.
No, no, I don't agree.
Administration answers that.
That's right. That's a serious question.
I want to hear from the administration. I appreciate the support from the state.
Right.
But I want to hear from our people.
I do too. I do too.
Sorry, Mr. Phil, I'm on the spot.
Yeah.
I, I
That we need to have the workshop.
I didn't hear the entire question, so I'm not sure.
Well, I just want to understand the financial systems and how we're going to capture, and the accounting systems and how we're going to capture all of this revenue.
So that again, it's state regulated. It's all state regulated. I understand. I understand.
A- and any operator is required to provide, um, well, I'll call audited quarterly uh, reports of their revenues and our rev- and we, you know, we get a percent of the, of percentage of those revenues.
That's just their account coming in.
But they'll lose their license if they
It's state regulated. They're not going to play games with accounting.
Yeah, yeah.
You've invested entirely too much
Yeah, there has to be a, a licensed professional that prepares it.
All right.
And then, and then an annual one for a true up, because obviously it, it, maybe it's not so obvious. Um, it, when, when they, when you do an annual, uh, review of, of, of your, of some, of books.
Mm-hmm.
They, they tend to go deeper, so they find
But there's cash, there's a lot of cash in this business. Do we have any idea of what the percentage of cash is in a typical?
You, you won't know what the, uh, the percentage of cash is. It's a cash-based business. That's how it's described as a cash-based business. And some of them don't even take credit cards, but the, but the regulation from the state
Right.
Is such that they are not going to jeopardize their licenser to not to play, to play games. And we've also got to keep in mind, this is again, to my point of why I want us to all have the same understanding. This is extremely regulated. Everything that comes in is state regulated and accounted for. Everything that goes out is state regulated and accounted for. If it is something that is broken, it can't just be discarded. It has to be accounted for and there's a, a specific way that the state requires, um, that all
Kind of inventory management.
Absolutely, there is. Absolutely.
I, I'm not in any way, shape or form, I'm, uh, an expert on, on how these businesses work. But I know a little bit about how businesses work and how, how, the m- metrics have already, I'm sure, been developed that you, that allow you to measure, um, to, you know, to, you take a look at what, what, what is purchased. To what, you know, what, what, what other activities there are within the, the business. And you can project pretty close, not, not to the dollar, but you can get an idea of, of what the revenue should be. And so I'm certain that the state government would do that. I am certain that we would, if they didn't, um, we would develop our own.
So excuse me, council president, so when do you want to have this gentleman come in?
Tuesday.
The, the next Tuesday, which is what the
Fourteen.
Yeah, no.
Next Tuesday.
No, 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 it's next
This is a work meeting.
Yeah.
Thirty-first, yes.
The thirty-first.
Okay, let's do, let's do that so we could all answer our questions.
Okay.
Do we hear, hear him out, but administration will be present.
Absolutely, please. Yes, absolutely. I will request that he be in attendance. Um, can we do that for six o'clock or six thirty? What's your pleasure?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Sure.
All right.
Council president, can you send me the information?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Then I'll notice.
Forwarding our questions to you, council president?
Um, I think they can be forwarded to the administration and, and Mr. Moon. Um, and then of course, please make sure I, I'm CC'd so I can in turn get them forwarded.
Got it.
Well, well
Send forward them to me and I'll forward on to Mr. Moon. That way there's central clearinghouse.
Well, I have a question now. Um, so did engineering, who came out with one on, onsite parking space for every two hundred fifty square feet?
I think that's consistent with, um,
With what?
Retail. Yeah.
Retail, but this is different from retail because in other retail spaces, like if, because these spaces so many people per square footage is allowed in the store. In other retail spaces, there isn't a requirement. So that's where I'm a little confused how that would work. Because if you have so many people in that store, then so many people will be in the parking lot.
Yeah.
So, so that's not a fair apples to apples, uh, situation, I feel.
And can I just make a comment?
So I think engineering has to look at that.
This, the
Hold on a second, please.
I wasn't involved in, in, in the, uh, the actual Yeah, I, I, I do believe there was some, um, discussion with, with our planner, but I'll double check with them.
Yeah, because, because folks can only, some, so many people are allowed in the space and the rest of the folks have to wait outside. And so you need bigger parking than usual.
I think so. I, I actually visited the cannabis, um, retail store in Bluefield and I went down
Which one?
There's three. The, um,
Okay.
Large one. And when I went down there, I couldn't even get in the parking lot. There was a man with a red sign holding up parking lot is full. There was a line of cars around the entire block. I drove three blocks in a number of directions and could not even find parking. I got so disgusted that I actually went to visit the one in Montclair, which has a parking garage and was a little bit easier to go to. So I think this parking is a real issue that we have to, in a very real way, think about.
Okay.
And I, I, just for the record, I, 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 I know it is an issue, certainly, um, we do need to consider the unique nature of this business. However, what we've seen across the country is that when retail dispensaries open up, they have this enormous demand uh, run on the business, so to speak, and then it tapers off and it gets to a normal level. So you don't want to force them to plan for a worst case scenario and, you know, presumably they're going to be in a space for
This store is still hopping. I go to the Belmont Tavern, which is right down the street from there and it, this place is hopping all the time. So I, I, they've been open for six, seven, eight months.
Six months. Okay. All right, guys. Thank you. Let's move on.
So
That's it.
Matters, council discussion.
For pending matters, um, Councilman Rutherford had brought up something that I wanted to discuss. Um, on the pending matters, just to get the temperament of my colleagues. Um, one of those is, um, to, to reconsider appointments that we make to be co-terminus. Um, for them to be annual appointments unless it's a quasi judicial board, which has its own set of rules. And then for us to be able to reappoint, um, on an annual basis. But I think that will eliminate some of the concerns where if you have someone, if they're not showing up, if they're not participatory in the fashion that you deem appropriate because they are your appointment, it would give us the ability to, um, handle that situation without it being, um, so difficult. So if we could, if, if my council colleagues are in agreement, I'll certainly speak to our legal department and see if we can make that adjustment.
So I'm fully supportive of annual, uh, appointments. I think we do need to address the, um, rare occurrence where something happens in the midst of an appointment. Uh, someone has an accident, someone gets sick, someone has a family situation which changes and they don't want to serve. You know, it would still be, I think it would be good to have a mechanism to transition them out of that space and put in someone else.
So we do have unexpired terms and as the elected official who has made the appointment, you do have the capacity to fill an unexpired term if someone that you've appointed.
That's if someone actually themselves says, you know what, I'm going to resign, whether you appoint someone or not, I can no longer do it. If they take themselves off the board, then it is custom to reappoint. I don't, I don't believe it's actually written down, but the, but the other side of that is, what if they don't want to? So that, so, so if we had a business owner, for example, who, um, had frequent violations of whatever and they're on the downtown lines, if it was my appointee, I would want them to, to be removed. And they may not want to because they have an interest there and, you know, or it could be the same thing. Someone is on the environmental commission, but now they're in a new business and the business is a dirty business. You know, put it in air quotes, I'm not, you know, I, I mean that by, you know, polluting. That might not be the right appointee for me. Uh, and I, and they may not want to go because it's in their interest. We need a mechanism where there is some disagreement between the pointer and the appointee to remove the appointee. Um, you know, should that be necessary?
So we can have, and can we have the, uh, legal team look at that?
C- council, council president, I've, I can't tell you how many times I've had this conversation over twenty-four years with municipal council members. Um, and, uh, you know, I don't, I've never seen a reason why, these are all advisory committees, boards, that they really have no power. Um, and I don't see any reason why they can't be appointed at your pleasure so that you have the ability to tell somebody you don't want them doing it anymore. Um, some people may disagree with that. That may put some people in a hard position. You know, you may feel uncomfortable doing that, um, which I certainly would understand. Um, but you know, I don't know, removing somebody, I, I, I think we have somewhere in one of these boards or committee. We, we used to have, maybe it still exists, some really onerous removal procedure, which makes no sense. It's a, it's a voluntary
Yeah, and that, that is a solution.
At the pleasure. That solves the problem.
So we don't worry about anything.
Can we have legal look into revision?
Easy thing to do.
Thank you.
The, the, I guess the only, you know, some of these boards are commit, may have a little bit more juice than others, so to speak. And that's where you may want to think about it.
Okay.
I just, I have to look at all of them. They're all in the same section of the code and I just have to go through them and we'll, we can talk about it.
Okay.
You also want to look for, for the same thing for, um, council, the ones that council votes on.
Consensus? I think if it's a council consensus to remove them, it needs to be a council consensus.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they were appointed, they were appointed by consensus.
Now, those are two-year appointments or one-year?
They're one-year appointments.
Those are one-year.
Presumably, I think, we, because we've looked at this, uh, as Ken has indicated. Presumably you want to set a, a set of rules that all of your, your advisory boards
Adhere to.
You know, it's just too confusing for you and for us to have different rules for different groups.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I would, I would recommend that you consider standard rules that apply to any, any appointments that you make. And therefore you, you, you
Agree.
Process and
Agreed. And just for the public's, um, advisement, um, on the advisory boards, the council, um, commissions and boards, we do have rosters that are in the clerk's office. And on those rosters, I believe I heard comments that, um, they didn't know who the appointment was made by and how long that term lasts. And so I do want to advise the public that on the rosters for all of the advisory boards as well as the quasi judicial boards, all of that information is identified. So there is no secrecy, there is no hidden agenda that is public knowledge, public information and can be identified very quickly.
And council president, just, you know, for example, the zoning board is a quasi judicial body. It, it's, it's not like those other boards. And state statute has something to say about how those people are appointed and state statute always, you know, supersedes our ordinances. Although an ordinance is required for that and the roster you're talking about is what was used in connection with all of this unfortunate misunderstanding. Because the clerk has a roster or the zoning board and it reflected one opening. And that's where this all flowed from. The mayor had nothing to do with this.
Mistakes do happen. Mistakes do happen.
You may have, as Ken has indicated, you may have different requirements for those statutory action boards. That, that's like, that, that, that's a different level. They have authority, that, you know, they can make decision-making. You may want to look at them differently than an advisory board who's really only there to provide input. So as opposed to making
Just want to make sure. A point to Mr. Kizer's statement, so just, you know, with all the confusion with the rosters and I had Googled and went back and was looking through the past since two thousand fifteen on them. At the same token, we kept saying that there was an appointment, it wasn't this year, but eventually that appointment was going to be in, in two years. It just wasn't happening this year. So to say that the, that you or, you know, um, or other council person wasn't going to get an appointment, um, you, you would have, you know, not this year. One was, so the way lined up had to be corrected and I, I give kudos to the mayor because she gave up one of her appointments to, to straighten this out.
And I appreciate that as well.
And to put us on a path where there's no confusion, because our cycle, where we get, we go, all got elected and ran at the same time is smooth. It, the, the way it lined up was, you know, all our appointments, uh, expired or started with our, with our, uh, with our, uh, own tenures. Where the other cycle, where only two council people are elected, somewhere along the line now, who knows? We had April, you know, we had, we switched from April election to, uh, uh, November, so it got juggled up somewhere.
It's, it's worth mentioning, uh, you know, that how it, it appears that it occurred
Yeah.
Was is that, that there was a, a, someone was given a two-year term. It should have been a four-year term. And so soon as, and this was maybe fifteen or sixteen years ago and, or longer.
Yeah.
And so what happened is that person stayed on for a really long time, so it all got lost in the sauce. So when that, when it came due, two years ago, it was just a normal four-year, because the statute said four years, they got four years. And that pushed it out of whack because the circumstance that we had this year, we had two new people, hadn't happened
Yeah.
In a longer period of time than that. So it never popped up before. So it's just
And we appreciate the administration as well as the mayor just resolving that quickly. That was my ask today. Is that this be resolved before we go into tonight's meeting so that, um, we would have a resolution? And I do thank you and appreciate, uh, your cooperation in doing so.
And council president, I just have one more question, just going back to the beginning of this conversation and pending matters with the one-year appointment. Where, where's that? I mean
What do you mean, where is?
I mean, what do you want to do? Where do you want to do a one-year appointment?
So for all of our advisory boards, I think we should be able to reappoint annually. And then if you want to keep that person for the four, four years, that's great. But if you don't want to, you should not be mandated to keep an appointment for entire four years.
Truthfully, I think that's a lot of confusion. I would, I'd like it better that we could remove somebody at our, at our pleasure.
Yeah, and I think that's how
I think that's cleaner.
It's, uh, that's your pleasure almost becomes the same thing.
Yeah, your pleasure is the same thing.
But we don't have to vote on and the clerk doesn't have this
It doesn't trigger an annual notification. I'm still reappointing X, Y, and Z to the
That's true.
Yeah.
But if you want to remove someone, you can certainly, at any time, at your pleasure. Okay, I think we're all in agreement.
Okay.
All right. Uh, and then there was one other point that I wanted to bring up on pending matters. Oh, wanted to, there's been some residents that have asked me, um, what is the temperature in West Orange for a cigar bar or for a hookah lounge now that we are approving cannabis?
I'm, I have, um, patronized cigar bars that have been very successful. Um, if we're looking for vibrant downtown, that is an offering I think that, uh, we could, we could consider. Now, I'm not a fan of hookah. Um, we've talked about vaping, it's the same thing. Um, so
Well, the state doesn't allow
Because cigars aren't up for you either. Um, but yeah, that would be how I felt. I, you know, that's just my thing.
I think we have enough
I'm happy to hear from the public, uh, on that order.
Well, I mean, we, we're looking for business and viable businesses and I, I just want to again, put it out there, get your temperature on it. Please go back to your fan base, resident base, have some conversations. If you're for it, you're for it. If you're not, you're not.
Well, what I would like to see is
Cigar bars? I mean, it would have to be
So alcohol. Secondary business.
Well, there's no smoking inside, they're smoking outside.
She smoke inside. Again, so let's be educated before we start.
JR's, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you go to JR's.
But it's not there any residence.
Selling cigars, right.
They are allowed to, it's an offshoot and it has to be a minor part of their business.
A lounge space.
A lounge.
Yeah, that is correct.
Where they sell food and, and I have a liquor license.
No, no liquor.
Yeah, yes, you can't do liquor in a cigar bar. Absolutely.
Because I've been to, they, they then are allowed to sell liquor and cigars in the same business, but you know, that's, we can debate it when we get
You should, I'm saying it exists.
Yeah, you can, you can bring your own.
Yeah, no, they sell. They sell. They sell.
This may be because it is a secondary business to, or business, which is cigars. They're, they're, so are sales.
So again, that's another one of those educational opportunities for us.
Part of downtown.
Yes.
I, I think the hookah thing, you get a, and, and I'm going to lose some points on this, but you get a younger crowd and it's really bad for your lungs.
A lot of commercials from the American Lung Association on TV.
And they tend to be open a lot later. It's this, you know, police issue, you know, at twelve and two in the morning. So those are just concerns. I'm happy to hear from the public what your thoughts are.
Okay.
I don't even know what it is.
Hookah?
Lucky you.
I mean, I'm
I have
But I, I, I have no
It is It is.
No, it's not the same.
Okay, let's say factual, guys, let's say factual, so. Misinformation coming from behind this table.
Real quick, though, with cigar bars, the thing you have to watch in our downtown is we have a lot of residential in the business zone.
Mm-hmm.
So, the problem is you could have the best business, outdoor patio, and then it goes right up to an apartment building, so we'd have to be real careful how we would do that.
Again, just food for thought, just, just food for thought, guys. Alright, that's all I have under pending matters, do any of my council colleagues have anything else on pending matters?
I actually do, I like to go on record, um, I'm gonna, you know, I, I was debating whether to bring this up tonight or not, but we do have, I, I know we're trying to work on, um, you know, the, working with the film industry and I know we've had some delays. However, we have a redevelopment agreement that had expired in, I believe, November, Mr. Gross?
Yes.
Okay. So. You know, a couple more weeks, if, you know, we're not further along, I, I, you know, we have, uh, valuable real estate sitting there without, uh, tax revenue, and I, I like to see us move forward with some kind of plan or some kind.
Who's in part of business development?
It, the administration feels, um, strongly.
Yeah.
That, um, we need to look at all of our alternatives and are in the process of doing that, so.
Okay, thank you. Are we going to?
That is a very, so I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
So, we're, we need to look at all of our alternatives and we're in the process of doing.
Yeah, that's alarming to me.
I'm sorry?
That's alarming to me, that, that, that makes me feel like there is, uh, some, uh, increased likelihood that this project may not.
No, it's not that there's an increased likelihood, but we, 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 we have, we had an agreement that expired, we have, we have an obligation to our residents to look at all, all alternatives while we can, and.
Well, I, I totally agree with that, I just, to, so we're having.
Not to alarm you, but we, we're, we're in agreement that we, we don't just, um, sit and wait. We are, you know, we wanna, we wanna look at what all our alternatives are and.
Which, which should include getting them to the table to sign the.
I think that is absolutely, uh, I, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say that dealing with them is a very high priority, there's no question about that. At that, but the, but the point is, we, we, we don't have an agreement with them at this point in time, therefore we have an obligation to look at all alternatives.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing further, I will just remind my council colleagues to be here on Tuesday at six thirty.
Your ABC.
ABC here.
Okay. I know, but we're done with the council meeting, right, okay, thank you. Six thirty on Tuesday evening back here in council chambers, if I can have a motion to adjourn that will conclude our public meeting.
And enter into ABC.
And enter into ABC hearing.
So move.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I. This concludes our meeting, our third meeting for West Orange.
Thank you.
Thank you, West Orange, we appreciate your time, we appreciate your support.
Oh, that's right, can I, folks, I'm taking.